Good evening and welcome to the 23rd meeting of fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I would like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introductions of the members of the board and our staff. If you'd like to start.
Cheryl Tagaya, Secretary.
Maggie Oldfield, Member.
Jim Davis, Member.
Sean Fahey, Member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as Chair. And now for our staff, who's with us this evening?
Josh Eckertley, Assistant Director. Tim's fighting with his computer, so he will join us.
And Tim will join us shortly. Director of Planning and Julia?
Julia Getman, Clerk.
Great, thank you, joining us on Zoom this evening. So to begin, we can start with our administrative items. The first item is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes, February 8th and January 30th. I've had a chance to look at the 30th. I did have some questions on the 8th, and personally, I would like a little more time with those, but I don't know how the other members, if they were able to review them as well or had comments.
I have no comments on the 30th. I'm good with that. And on the 8th, I was not in attendance.
I didn't have any edits.
Okay.
On the 8th.
I'm okay with the 30th, just the 8th. I just wanted the minutes to reflect that we talked about five stories in East Milton and three was preferred. I think we spent a lot of time on that. I just think it should be reflected in the minutes. That's all.
Is that, okay, so the East Milton zoning update?
Yeah, old business Milton zoning, first paragraph, about three quarters of the way down. Heightened lot size restrictions, ground floor uses, setbacks, open spaces, and affordable housing requirements. Dimensional characteristics and design guidelines were discussed. I think it should say something to the effect of like a five-story height limit was discussed, but a three-story height limit was preferred.
And that was eliminated from the?
I think what we had discussed was three to four stories allowing for some opportunity for special permit to get increased benefits like was done in Milton Village. So it seems to me we should take that to the public. I thought that's what we discussed. So that's why I struck that out so that we could still leave opportunity for the public to, that's what, I went back and listened to the tape.
Yeah, we could say a five-story height limit was discussed and it was determined that it was not appropriate by the board.
Be happy with that.
I did have some concerns about some of the Citizen Speak portion that was removed, which I think it's a question.
Yeah, if you want to go back and watch the tape, which I did in doing those edits, because when I was reading them, it didn't, I wasn't recalling it the way it was written. And so I went back and watched the tape. So if you'd like to go back and watch the tape as well?
That's what I would. And it looks like some other things under some other comments were added. And it may have been stated, but I just want to make sure that those are accurately reflected. So if we could defer the minutes of February 8th, just for a little more review. So could I have a motion to accept the minutes of January 30th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of January 30th.
A second?
Second. Sorry, Maggie.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm abstaining as I was not here.
And a motion to defer the minutes of February 8th to our next meeting approval.
I'll make a motion to defer the minutes of February 8th to our next meeting.
Second?
Second.
Great. And you were not in favor, but all of those who are in?
Aye.
Present? Aye. Okay. Great. Thank you. And then discussion of our next meeting dates. We have currently on the schedule, March 14th and a March 28th date. Are there any other dates, Josh? And we can include this maybe in the Director of Planning and your report.
There are a couple of dates that we may want to post for, for the East Milton zoning and for Superfund meeting, but I'll talk about them in more detail.
Okay, that's great. So those are the two.
14th and 28th.
The 14th and the 28th.
For some reason, I have Planning Board Public Forum on the 14th. Is that?
I had it done on the 25th.
Oh, okay.
To jump ahead, the East Milton zoning is confirmed for the 25th.
Oh, yeah.
And that'll be at the Art Center.
25th, okay.
The 25th. So, and that leads us into the Director of Planning and Community Development. Do we have?
Tim's still fighting with his machine, but.
You can start maybe then with what you have.
Yeah, he and I have discussed the update. It's brief despite the sort of events of the past few days. There are two upcoming events that attendees and the board members may be interested in. The first will be this Monday, the 20, this Tuesday, rather, the 27th in Hyde Park. The EPA is hosting their next public forum on the Lower New Ponce at Superfund site. They'll be discussing the formation of a community advisory group or a CAG, which gives residents and stakeholders a direct voice in the Superfund remediation process. And that'll be at the Hyde Park Community Center at 6:30 on the 27th. And we've confirmed with the Milton Art Center for the 25th of March to host our second East Milton Square Mixed Use Overlay zoning public forum.
At 7?
At 7, yes.
Okay. And we should also state that we have just, it has just been posted and scheduled, a joint meeting of the Select Board and the Planning Board to discuss moving forward on the MBTA zoning. That will be this Monday at 4:00 PM.
That'll be executive session.
And that's executive session, but just so, it has been posted. So that will be a joint meeting, but will be executive session. And anything else so far?
That's all she wrote at the moment.
Okay. All right. And when Tim joins us, if there's anything else, we can, we can bring him in at that time. So with that, we can ask if there's anyone here this evening on Citizen Speak. If it is an item on the agenda, we will give an opportunity for those to speak. We have two public hearings this evening, and of course, residents will be welcome to speak at that time, at the time of the public hearing. So if somebody would like to speak on something that is not on the agenda, I would welcome you to come forward and state your name and address for the, for the record. So is it MBTA?
It's MBTA, kind of, yeah.
Related. Then feel free to, if you want to speak now. Yes, that's fine.
Hi, Kristen Bagley Jones.
Welcome.
88 Pleasant Street. And I was here, I wasn't planning on speaking, but when I came, I thought I'd like to share my view. First of all, an appreciation to all of you on the Planning Board. You've put an incredible amount of hours and effort into this, and I appreciate that. There's a lot of people in town that have worked on this and certainly have a lot more expertise. I don't have any expertise in this area. So I appreciate all the work that you've done. But I am here tonight and am very concerned about the way the town has been really pulled apart by this issue and wanted to just put that out there and say, as a Planning Board, as a Select Board, as all these other groups of people, is there a way for us to come together and figure this out? I have such respect for people on both sides of this issue, on the yes side and on the no side. I will say that I'm one of the ones in the middle. I voted yes, but with a heavy heart because of East Milton, where I lived for many, many years before I moved to Pleasant Street. So I'm really here to say, is there a way to go back and look at the seven, I think it was seven principles that the plan was based on? Am I correct on that? And to look at those again, to think about what would be helpful for the entire town. But more importantly, how do we bring the town together? It can't have been easy on you guys. It can't have been easy on the other committees, and it certainly hasn't been easy in town. So if there's a way for us to pull things together, that would be great. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. That's great.
Eric Pocanson has his hand up.
Okay. Eric, if you can state your name and address for the record, please. You're welcome.
Thank you. Eric Pocanson, 583 Elliott Street. Speaking about the MBTA Community Act and last week's vote. And I just want to say that I think the framing of the results of last week's vote as a rejection of our classification is both incorrect and unproductive. The vote was on a specific zoning article, and Milton remains a rapid transit community. I recognize that the Planning Board is not the only entity involved in determining what happens next. As the Select Board remains involved, you just referenced the meeting on Monday, and then there's the state, effectively a wild card in this, could play a role through, through the boards. However, I think the Planning Board still has both the power and responsibility to unilaterally develop a compliant zoning article to submit to town meeting, which this board promised to do for this spring, specifically stating that they could come up with a better and fairer zoning bylaw. I'm not gonna hold on to the hope that it'll happen for spring, because I know that that's an incredibly tight timeline, if it's even possible. But I really hope that this Planning Board can do that for the fall town meeting. In the meantime, I think it's Planning Board's responsibility, given its promise and the uncertainty created by last week's vote, that residents deserve to hear from the Planning Board explicitly what it is going to do. You know, questions, answers to questions like, will the Planning Board fulfill at least a portion of this promise to develop a compliant zoning article for town meeting at some point this year? What will the community engagement and public process look like? We heard a lot of complaints about how that was done previously and ways it could be improved. Do we need to ask questions like, why did you vote yes or no on the vote, if you voted at all? The previous speaker referenced the criteria that was used to guide the development, and I'm wondering if that will change or how it will be applied to this new zoning. And then I think the final one is, are we starting over from scratch or are we using components of Article 1? I think that there are opportunities to expand some of the sub-districts that were in Article 1, especially around Elliott Street and the Blue Hill Parkway's corridor, generally around the Blue Hill Ave, Blue Hill Parkway and Brook Road intersections. Maybe we include St. Mary's Church and school campus. Do you reduce the lot size to 6,000 square feet? Tier the zoning to allow for more units on something like a 10,000 square foot lot? Do you increase the density at Mattapan and Milton stations to compensate for any of those reductions in density because of the larger area? I think these are all possibilities if you do try to keep it. And I just hope that the Planning Board will pursue a compliant article. I appreciate all the work that has gone into it, and I know that there's a tremendous amount of uncertainty, but I just hope that we can all do our work and comply with state law. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Yes, Pete, if you'd like to come join us?
I'm Peter Jackson, 14 Capen Street. I'm glad to have an opportunity to talk to you tonight. I recently learned about an MBTA proposal, what they're calling the sloped walkway. I'm gonna pass a couple pictures around. You can look at while I talk. And my understanding is they're proposing to either purchase from extra space or take land from extra space to construct this walkway. I'm really opposed to that project. I worked, and back in 2007, 2009, something like that, Ned and I worked together on a project for a new development at the extra space site, which would be located up adjacent to the sidewalk in that property. And this project, this proposal by the MBTA would preclude that kind of opportunity again. I passed around some pictures of the building that was designed for that. We worked with a project with extra space as, as the developers to develop a mixed-use building on that site that included 14 residential units. And with some, I think there was 3,500 square feet of restaurant space. There was a community space for buildings, for community use or an environmental group or whatever. It involved the restoration of the two historic mill buildings into residential units. That has been completed, and those buildings have been preserved and, and converted into residential units. It also included a lot of public benefits, public open space benefits beyond the, the development. There, there was the development of a bridge and deck building between the two mill buildings that's open to the public and available for fishing or whatever. There was about 200 feet of a linear walkway going from Adam Street down to those buildings with interpretive signage on it. There was, the, it was permitted that the public could walk through the extra space storage parking area, or parking lot, and we opened the fence along the MBTA line there and put a gate in to give pedestrian access to the T, which in that access, access serves the exact same purpose as this proposed sloped walkway. So it's not providing any new thing. I think the idea is the MBTA is trying to appease the town because they tore down the stairway, which was a bad move on their part, but at the same time, they're really not providing any enhanced access by this. And they're precluding a very, a very good development opportunity on the site. There was a river overlook Pocket Park, which is down, if you go down the greenway and there's the, the old railroad bridge that's decked over, and there's a park there that was built as part of this project. There was interpretive signage talking about the river and the geology and the historic mills and the historic bridge. All of these things, oh, there was also a conservation easement on the knoll that's behind there that is held. And so I think, you know, all these items, the mill restoration, all these public access items were completed as part of that project. And unfortunately, it was 2008, 2009, when the bottom fell out of the economy, and they just couldn't continue to go forward with the project. But as these photos show, it was a beautiful building that would have fit in there and really been an enhancement to Milton Village area. I don't want to preclude that opportunity again from happening. So I encourage the Planning Board, I don't know what, if any, role you're playing on that, but I will also be speaking to the Select Board next week. And I've sent these photos and a description of the project to them. And I hope that the project hasn't advanced so far, that, that it's a foregone conclusion. So thank you.
Thank you. And we would like to put that on the agenda in the future. So, thank you.
I would just comment that Pete designed the park.
Pretty beautiful. Okay.
Can I just mention, I also had alerted Meredith and Tim to having seen the article in the Milton Times and having watched the Conservation Commission meeting. I think it's early, or it was in December, early in the process for that sloped walkway. So I do think, while we don't have jurisdiction, I do support us providing an opinion because we've spent so much time as a Planning Board in the past developing thoughtful zoning for that area. And to have something which would preclude one of the few sites that we saw as having real opportunity, I think also would, we should voice those concerns to the, to the MBTA. And I don't know that both can't coexist, but they should definitely be aware of our concerns. So I would support us putting that on the agenda as soon as we can.
Absolutely. Great. All right. Let's.
Hand raised on Zoom.
On Zoom, okay.
Kristen Joyce.
Kristen? Yes. Welcome. And if you could give us your address, please.
Kristen Joyce, 42 Portland Circle. I just had a couple of questions. I think it's, one is sort of a repeat of one of the earlier. I was just wondering if we could kind of reopen the survey and try to get input again, now that it seems more people are aware of MBTA and, and wondering specifically if maybe preferences are different between different districts. So that was one question I had. And then the other is, just a little bit ago, Sustainable Milton proposed some zoning that wouldn't have been able to get into the MBTA zoning. And I'm wondering if now we have an opportunity to incorporate some of those green zoning into a new plan. That's it.
Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you. Yep.
Anyone else in the public? Any other hands online? Okay, great. So with that, thank you for those comments, everyone from the public. We can now move on to, we have one item of new business. It was discussion, and it's really a response to a discussion of conflict of interest that was raised at the February 8th Citizen Speak. I just wanted to sort of put this to rest as far as the Planning Board. I did have a conversation with Peter Mello. When there is a conflict or potential conflict that is raised before our board, it is not in our jurisdiction. Anyone, residents, any individuals can file a report if they, if they are concerned about a conflict of interest. But we, as a board, as a Planning Board, we cannot, we cannot file a, you know, a conflict of interest report. So just, that's why it's on here, because I know, I had received a few calls saying what is happening, you know, and really, there's nothing that unfortunately that we can do. But if a resident is ever concerned about there being in ethics a conflict, then certainly an individual has every right to file. And I think that's, it is simply out of our jurisdiction. So with that, I just wanted to address that at tonight's meeting. So there were no outstanding questions on that. The, so now we can actually move to reopening our public hearing for 111 Highland Street Special Permit, continued from January 25th, 24th. Yes, Ned, good. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you. For the record, Ned Corcoran, counsel on behalf of the North Bridge Companies as the developer proponent for the development at 107 111 Highland Street. If we can open up and make Paul Avery, Blaine Buck, I think Wendy Noah Kunske, and Jim Coughlin panelists. I know that Paul, in particular, is the project engineer, will share screen and go through some modifications to the site plan that we have submitted within the last week. We submitted those to DEP or its review as part of the appeal of the Conservation Commission Order of Conditions. And those same modifications obviously are being proposed to the site plan. And we'd like to walk through what those changes are in response to issues and concerns that we've, we've listened to, obviously, over the many months of this, this hearing process. So if Paul can share screen, he and I can walk through what those modifications are. I think probably for tonight, because of school vacations and other things, we probably won't be able to do much more than walk through those modifications. I did also submit a, a delivery schedule plan that's based on the delivery schedule for the Newbury Port Avita, same number of beds. And interestingly, that there are five regular deliveries per week. So one per day. There are a couple of others that happen on a monthly basis, and then other periodic unscheduled deliveries that occur as well.
I'm sorry, Ned, did you say the Needham?
I said the Newbury Port.
The Newbury Port, sorry. Thank you.
And you've sent that to Tim, those?
I sent that to Tim.
Those are in the?
It's been shared with, shared it with neighbors and posted it. I think it's posted.
Okay, great. That's why I just want to make sure.
So if Paul can turn on his microphone.
Can you see me and hear me okay?
Yes, welcome.
Thank you. Is my screen being shared?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay. So thank you. I'm gonna jump back and forth between a couple of slides here, but just wanted to start by walking through this current site plan that we submitted last week. Talk about the things we've done to improve the plan, and then we can just take the discussion from there. So very simply, there are three fundamental things that we've done to revise this plan from the version that was submitted back last summer. The first of them one is we have actually reduced the building footprint. Fundamentally, if you look at this plan, it looks about the same, but in actuality, we've reduced the footprint of this by about 25, 2,200 square feet. And we've also, this corresponding reduction, the gross floor area of about 4,300 square feet. I'm gonna jump quickly to the next slide, and I'm gonna come back to this one, just because on this topic here, and this, this slide is part of the documents that were submitted, this blue dashed line here represents, you know, where the building footprint was versus the tan area, which is where it is. So the majority of this north, the neighborhood here on the north end has stayed more or less the same, but we have pulled back the northeast edge here along the Service Drive, some other changes, some minor pullbacks, again, you know, beyond the, the service area. And then this entire wing here, you can kind of see that it's more or less the same shape, but it's just been brought in. So those are where the reductions have taken place on the building footprint. And again, the total reduction in the building footprint is about 2,200 square feet. Okay? The second thing that we did, going back to the site plan here, is we removed about 15 parking spaces from the plan.
And that, Paul, Paul, I can just jump in on that. We, after the last meeting, we had a discussion about volume of parking. The hospital reached out, and we have reached an agreement in principle to provide parking for holiday and weekend events. So the parking that remains on site is strictly for the day-to-day operation of the facility, an occasional visitor during the day. But all extraneous parking will take place over at the hospital on weekends and holidays at their office parking area, and people will walk, walk across. So given that, we were able to eliminate 15 parking spaces from this plan, and Paul will walk you through where they were and what the, why the choice to eliminate the spaces that we have was done.
Okay. So eliminating, we didn't take any out from the front. Where we took them was from the rear parking here. Sort of the initial knee-jerk reaction on doing this was, let's just take off like this northern leg here. That, well, that's more than 15 spaces, so we, or was more than 15 spaces, so we couldn't do that. But also that, we need a bit of a hammerhead there for like the fire truck access, which is, I'll show that again. It's been updated, but it's fundamentally the same as it was before. So what we decided was the more meaningful way to reduce the parking was to get rid of the ones that are closest to the wetlands resource area. And I will jump back to the second slide here. The blue here shows where the parking was that we have taken out. And again, we've taken some out here. We've moved the storage building, and I'll get to that, is part of the third component of what we've changed here. So again, the reasoning why, if you look at this, this red line represents the 25 non-disturbed zone, which is a parallel offset from the wetlands. So where we're closest to this line is where we're closest to the resource areas. So to remove the parking spaces here and remove the parking spaces there just seemed like the, the greatest benefit in terms of just protecting resources and minimizing the project impacts. Okay? So the third area that we made some changes is we took out all of the items that were down in the service area, mainly the dumpsters, the generator and the transformer, and got them out of there. By doing this, we were able to clean up this area considerably. The generator or the dumpsters were a concern that was raised, an item that should be at the back of the house, which from the perspective of Highland Street was not the back of the house. It was the front of the house. There were concerns about it being visible, and there were concerns about the, the impacts of the trucks coming to pick it up. Where we have moved it is about as far away from Highland Street as we possibly can, and it is in the area where the storage building used to be. So now, there's a bit of an inconvenience here, the, to take the trash out, the dumpsters, they're gonna have to go out to the back, but that's what we've done. And the storage building then had to move accordingly because. And the storage building then had to move accordingly because we used it for the dumpster space. The dumpster space being squared away like that made the most sense, just in terms of ease of delivery, pickup, for emptying. The second item that was down in this area was the, the generator. There were some sound acoustic concerns with that. Where we put the generator is down in this space here. We've got a retaining wall here, there's actually a set of stairs to come down, so where we will put this now is, again, a considerable distance from Highland Street, but it's also set down below retaining walls, which will serve to further attenuate any noise concerns. We had to put a staircase down, because there's like about an eight-foot vertical difference there between, you know, where these walks are up by the building and the existing grade. This red line here, again, represents the non-disturbed zone. We tried to put the transformer down there as well, but it won't fit. I suspect National Grid would also have issues about being able to get, pull up trucks right next to it, or do whatever they need to do too. So, the transformer stayed up above. If we go back to this other slide here, with those items gone, what we did was we straightened out the Service Drive, this line right in here, if you can see my cursor. It used to come down and it used to bend, now it's just straight. This bump out here is where the transformer used to be, right in here is where the dumpsters used to be, and this little bump out here is where the generator used to be. So, all of this zigzagging retaining wall that we used to have is gone. We now can come straight down with it, and we've created all this space to just increase the buffer between the development part of the project, the non-disturbed zone, the wetlands, and Highland Street. The result of all of this is we have reduced the impervious area of this project by about 5,700 square feet. That's the, the difference on that. We are still going and working through the drainage calculations that go with this, not only to reflect the revisions in the site plan, but also response to comments that have been raised, and that's in the appeal process, and we're, have a meeting with the DEP this week. So, moving forward, we also went and updated the site access plans. These drawings are fundamentally the same as they always were. The only thing that's new here is we had to rerun them because, as we showed a moment ago, that the Service Drive used to have a kink in the bottom, and now it's straight. So, if we just reran the whole thing, we'd have the, looking like they're going into the retaining walls. We just brought these up to speed. These movements are exactly the same as what we talked about before. The top one is a ladder truck entering the site. When it enters the site, it can do one of three things. Well, it can enter from either direction, but it can then drive down into the service area, it can go around the roundabout at the front, or it can go into the, the parking area by the storage building at the back of the site. Exiting remains the same as it did before. It, it will do a backup in like a three-point turn maneuver here to get out, and then drives out around the roundabout, and then there's a backup maneuver from the service area. Again, both of these diagrams are the same as they were before, the only difference is we just reran it to correct the, the straightening on the access road. We have a new drawing here, which is a supplement to that, that says, okay, now we've got ladder trucks in place at two locations in the building, and we now have, you know, what's the, how do we get to all the various access points on it? There are two ways around, we've shown those here. There's a maximum of 430 feet from the southern loop to arrive at this point here in the middle terrace, and then there is a maximum of 390 feet around the northern route to come and go well into the terrace and beyond. This route here could also come back down the other side and start to overlap with the route from the south as well. So, this is just an additional diagram here that goes beyond just the trucks themselves, but then, you know, how the crews will gain access to the, the building perimeter once the ladder truck is in place. The final access plan, this again is just the same thing, this is a rerun of the delivery truck. The movements here, again, are exactly as they were before, both entering and exiting. The only change here is in the service area, we have taken the kink out of it and straightened it. So, just an update to the plan, there's not really any new content here. So, lastly, we have the update to the utility plan. This drawing was updated to do two things. One, to represent the relocation of the generator and the transformer. We now have the electric coming into the site, we have primary electric going over to the new transformer location, and the secondary reduced voltage then coming back and entering the building at the same place as it did before. The generator provides the, the working voltage as well, and, and joins with the, the reduced voltage from the transformer, and we have a natural gas line coming through to feed the generator, keeping this all out of the non-disturbed zone. The last thing that has happened on this plan is we received comments from the engineering department on dated November 23rd. This plan deals with things like, they wanted to see gate valves for the hydrants in the service, they wanted, you know, copper for the water service, and a few items like that. There were also a series of notes that have been added to the drawing in the lower left here. This drawing responds to all of those comments, with the exception of comments about the specifications for manhole covers, and we haven't submitted the response to that, just because that's on detail sheets that we aren't, haven't submitted at this time, but that remaining comment will be addressed when we, when we complete it. So, that is an overview of what we've done to change the plans. Ned, if I omitted anything?
No, I think you've got it.
Okay.
Okay, questions from the board, and we can hear from residents. Anyone else to start us off?
So, the total reduction of the size of the building is only 2,200 square feet. So, what percentages of that, what percentage of the building is that? So, you started off with a 60,000-square-foot building, which, you know, in my mind, the new fire station is 20,000 square feet. So, this building is three times the size of the new fire station.
The lot, Maggie, the lot coverage has gone from 38,000 square feet to 36,000 square feet. Gross floor area, which combines two floors, has gone from 60,000 square feet to 55,000 square feet.
Yes, but it's only still a reduction of, I think, less than 4%.
Probably. This is the, this is the smallest building that we can do. We're not changing the number of units, we're not changing the number of beds.
Yeah, so, yeah, so I'm not as worried about bed count as size of building, because I think bed count is up to your business. But I think 60,000 square feet is still, to me, a really big building. That's an acre and a half of a building, which is a huge building.
On two stories.
Yep.
The, the, the floor, the lot coverage of the building is 3/4 of an acre. It is not.
It's not.
Two acres.
So, I still would like to see if, if you can, a reduction of the size of the, the building.
I, we hear you. We've reduced it to the extent that we can reduce it.
Because what size of building is Newbury Port?
I don't know exactly, but it's approximately the same size. It's the same number of beds and the same number of rooms.
So, it's about the same size?
The zoning says that the maximum lot coverage allowable is 42,000 square feet. 16% of the buildable area. We're at 13.9% of the buildable area.
Yep, I saw that. Okay, that's all I have.
So, I, I did have a couple of questions. I really like the fact that you moved the dumpster, you moved the generator for noise levels, and it states in your, in your notes that the relocation of the dumpster will remove two to three truck trips per week associated with regular and periodic emptying of trash and recycling from the loading areas. Can you talk about that?
Yeah, there would be at least one trash removal and one recycling removal per week, probably more likely two of each. And so, those trips, those trucks would be coming down, emptying dumpsters, backing up the hill to the circle and out. Now, those trips will be, take place, they'll go straight in across to the rear parking lot, they'll, they'll make those moves there, and then straight back out. That area is, other than the, the area that's cleared for the purpose of the parking area is really still wooded, and will be much quieter, and the noise will be on the other side of the building from Highland Street. So, there should be no noise associated with the backup for that.
And I, I know it was definitely mentioned that some of the neighbors were concerned with the size of the trucks. We had talked about how delivery trucks, you know, they're doing less deliveries, but on larger, on larger trucks. And did you say it is possible, with, with the contract that would be signed, giving them directional guidance, delivery guidance, the cameras being on there, that you can limit the size of the truck, you can, with, who would be contracted, limit the size of the truck?
Our expectations that at least the two Gordon's deliveries would be the full 40.
Forty foot, but not.
The others would not be exceeding that. There's, the, the, the truck that we show on the, on that turnaround diagram is the maximum-sized truck that would be used for deliveries, and that will be captured at that. There won't be any larger.
Is that written into a contract with the delivery people?
It will be written into a contract. There'll be timing, a time of day of deliveries, we can manage the time of day between nine and one, 10 and two, whatever is preferable, and they'll do that. So, it'll be one a day. There'll be strict route entry and exiting. As you know, we've proposed signage at the, at Highland Street restricting all traffic to left turns only. There'll be a camera to monitor all traffic entering and exiting the site, so that we can monitor that aggressively as necessary, and there'll be penalty provisions written into the contracts for the delivery folks and for the employees to make, to ensure that they will, to the extent possible, obey those traffic restrictions.
And I know we, again, the parking, and that's great that the hospital's allowing, you know, holiday parking, overflow parking on-site. I know you were going to try to talk to the hospital about also signage, you know, there's a real concern on the traffic, and being allowed to come in on Highland Street just invites people to come up the ladder streets. And you were talking about how we could maybe encourage, how the hospital should be encouraging on Reed's Dale.
Yeah, we've spoken to the hospital. Yeah, we've spoken to the hospital about putting signage at the, at the rear of that property, directing vehicles leaving the hospital to a right turn only. And then, we've asked them to also put in a camera to help try to monitor that.
See who's exiting.
Obviously, as we've seen from materials submitted by neighbors, that there is, there are ambulances and other commercial traffic that come to and from the hospital that exit out the rear, and out in, particularly down Spafford Road, which is not appropriate. And so, the hospital's agreed to work with us to implement some of those things, and we've asked them to do it as soon as possible, and they've, they've agreed that they would, they would get us some signage to review with the board and move forward on that.
So, that would be something we would want to definitely have, because it's, it's an existing problem that, you know, is, that this may be an opportunity to, to improve that. And I had just two other questions. One, Doug Henry had had a concern about how the measurement from the Bacardi property was being measured, the non-disturbed area between his, the buffer area that was agreed to between the Bacardis, that it was being measured. I think he was concerned about the point of the measurement, that maybe it was being measured from the wall. Do you recall that question? I just want to make sure that we are able to answer that for.
And I don't know if it's on these plans, we'll pull them up, at least respond to them at the next meeting. But the zoning provides that at the point of the existing grade, that's closest to the Bacardi dwelling, that the, that the height from the existing grade to the ridge of the roof can be no more than 25 feet.
That's what it was, yep.
One and a half meters and 25 feet. And so, that is an absolute number that we have to pay very careful attention to. It was the, if you recall, during the zoning process, that, that was one of the biggest issues, was proximity of this building to Ms. Bacardi, and the appearance of that building and the height of that building from her property. And so, you know, the, we, we, you know, that's the two-story section of the building, it is built into the ground, and so, we manage that height as best we can with that.
Yeah, so I think that was his question, what is the point of where it's being measured? Is it right on the property, you know?
It is. I think it's, Paul, is it like, looks like maybe 61 feet on that?
Are we talking about the building height or the setback?
The point of the building that's closest to the Bacardi property line, what's the setback there?
Yeah, so, the, the closest one would be, here, here it is right here, this, I didn't put this slide up, but this is in the set that we submitted with the updated zoning table on it.
61.
So, the closest, the closest building corner to the Bacardi property would be this one right here at 61 feet.
Okay.
We have the, the 20-foot, the, the minimum vegetated buffer zone, and then we're at 36 feet, the closest point for retaining wall for the grass cable wall.
And, yeah, and just clarifying, the point of existing grade, that it's being measured, the height, not to exceed the 25 feet.
Correct.
Right.
Okay, we just want to, and then, my last question is, there was a question, I believe, from the town engineer on the tie-in to the, on Spafford Road, that there was, that there was a concern about where the tie-in would be.
Yeah, he required a separate.
Across the street, yeah.
He, yeah, he required a gravity, construction gravity break manhole.
Right.
Okay, so, we got that comment, oh, last spring sometime, so, this, this provision, this isn't new, this has been on here since we submitted the plans back in August.
Right. There's a, as I understand it, Paul, there's a, there's a force main that comes from the building and up the hill to that point where it ties to the town system, but the town, the DPW director wanted a, a gravity break, so that there was a, there was physical break between that point and the tie-in as extra protection as to how that flow would manage.
And, and that's what this is. So, the FM here, I mean, it's upside down here by the time it comes around here, but this FM is the force main. This SMHG08, that, that's the final gravity manhole on Spafford, and so, rather than just.
Well, you're behind the, the Cronin Room graphic there with, where the, the SMH is, so, if you can move, slide that plan to the left. There you go.
Yeah, there we.
Okay, sorry about that. Okay? So, yeah, here, this is it. So, this is, this is the existing final gravity manhole on Spafford. The FM, the force main, is coming up from the project site, and we just have the gravity break manhole here, so that the force main discharges into this manhole, and then there's a gravity flow into the existing one.
So, given that that is such a narrow roadway, how, from a construction point of view, how does that affect the, the neighbors on this, during the construction period?
The contractor's going to have to work with the town engineer and police details to, to manage traffic with, during the periods of time when that work is taking place. I imagine that it would be a day or two here, and a day or two, you know, brief periods of time, but there will be an amount of time when that work will be in effect, and they will, will have to coordinate that.
Into the construction management plan.
Construction management, yeah, that's right.
Okay, that's all I had, so.
I have a, yeah, I have a couple of questions, Ned. First, I think the changes that have been made are positive changes, addresses. been made are positive changes. It addresses some of the concerns that the neighbors had brought up with proximity of some of the components that were in the front that have now been moved to the back. I guess I have a question in terms of reduction of building area. And I, I see what Paul had reviewed with us earlier to show where you reduced it. But what, what did you do to your program to reduce that area?
They really just tightened up the building. They didn't reduce the number of rooms. They didn't reduce the number of beds. I think the architect needs to, when, when she's here in March, to talk specifically where the reduction, how the reductions work with respect to the building.
Yeah.
But there was some, I think, they just sharpened their pencil and found some places to, to just pare back. You know, Maggie's right. It's, it's not dramatic in terms of the, the reduction.
Right.
But it is a reduction. And they did find some areas where programmatically it could be more efficient.
Yeah. Yeah. And were those reductions a combination of, that square footage reduction, is that a combination of both floors?
Yeah. The forty, the 2,400 is, the 2,257 square feet is lot coverage.
Yeah.
So, that's, it's the coverage of both. And then, you add the reduction on the lower level on the southerly side to get a total of 4,300 square feet of gross floor area reduction.
Okay. Okay. And when the architect is here, I think so we can explore this a little bit further. I suspect if there's no reduction in bed count and the program is still achievable, it had to be common area that they're anticipating being able to reduce. But, you know, I guess to satisfy our interest and just understanding, you know, how do you make the building as small as possible, understand your client's perspective to maintain bed count. But I think it'd be nice if we could at least understand what was achieved. And, you know, and possibly we have an architect on the board. She might have some advice for further reduction. And hopefully, you'd be amenable to listening.
We're certainly amenable to listening.
Yeah. And my last question is parking. I, looking at the table and looking at the plan, I think you have less parking on the plan than the table reflects. Is that possible? Because the math on the table reflects 51 parking spaces, but I can't find 51 on the plan.
The table says 45 spaces?
Well, then you.
Including, which include four accessible and two electric?
Okay.
It's, it's a total of 45.
Okay.
Forty-five is the total.
And how many of those are handicapped?
Four.
Four? Okay.
And two are electric for charging stations.
So, I do see 45 on the plan. Okay.
Yeah.
So, the two and the four are included in the count?
That table's maybe, is confusing because it, it can be read to say there's a total of 51 and not.
It could be just that this member didn't read the table clearly.
Yeah, got it right here.
Okay. Those are all the questions I have.
Yeah. So, while we're on that, can you reduce the number of spaces back down to the 35?
No. We reduced to the number that we absolutely need for the operation of the building. If we could've, we would've. There's no reason, there's really no reason not to reduce further unless we can't reduce further.
Yeah, except for keeping trees. Because there's, that was my other question is, you know, 300 trees are coming down. So, if you only reduced, you know, the, the square footage of the, the footprint of 2,200, do you know how many trees you'd save?
No, no. I don't think we save any because the building itself is surrounded by, we're right up against retaining walls up against the 25-foot no disturb. Those walls aren't moving. Well, we'll save a few trees in that area where the dumpster is, is gone. And we'll have an opportunity to plant some infill there with the landscaping. But on the southerly side, the retaining wall with the off-way around isn't moving. The reduction, real reduction in area and the opportunity to save some trees is really out where the parking, the back parking area. One of the things that we, I know we've committed to in the past is that the rear parking would be lights off for third shift and, you know, not used at all during the overnight. But I don't, I, there's not much, there, there aren't gonna be many trees saved by this, by these reductions. I just, you know, you have to be, I have to understand. We understand that. This was always a project that was gonna be very impactful with respect to the loss of trees.
Can lighting be put on motion detectors or is that, that's allowable?
Yeah.
So, the front, so from the Highland Street, I'm thinking, so you're not getting, you know, that, an all-night glare through bedroom windows across, you know, the way or?
Yeah. And I think.
Motion detectors. I know it works well in other properties in town.
The zoning requires that the lighting be dark sky compliant. And I think we've, in the, in the materials that we submitted, the cut sheets that we submitted with respect to the lighting, we are, do achieve that. They are, you know, be focused down so that only lights the areas that need to be lighted for safety and whatnot. And, and I don't know that those lights in from Highland Street can go off at night, but we can explore that.
That would be great. Yeah. What else? I know I have other questions, but it's architecture related. We, we definitely will be doing a night of architecture just for those who are here. Architecture, landscape architecture was just gonna be really important, including materials of that driveway coming in, those walls. I, I think that's critically important to the, to the view, the aesthetic and giving it a residential feel versus commercial feel. We also plan to have Chief Madden come in. We couldn't have him come in, but I know the residents and neighbors have questions on that. So, we definitely will have an evening to dedicate to that. Any other questions? The board members? And then, we'll invite that, some of the neighbors.
Yeah, I have, I guess what's gonna be repetitive comments. But first, to Sean's question about how tight can the floor area be, it'd be interesting if you did a program where you showed us how much square footage is dedicated to each room type or each unit type and how much common area is required. I, I don't know how much of this is driven by code or by their own practice or the way they operate. But I know there's common area for each neighborhood. So, if you had some description that said, here's the way this facility is organized. We have three neighborhoods. Each neighborhood has X number of rooms. The sizes are this. The common areas are this. And that way, you, you could see how that compares benchmark it against what's in Newburyport, what's in Nida. And then, we would get to see whether we think that's as tight as it can be. I too remain concerned about the impact on the site. And I keep going back to the site design standards. And I, I appreciate the reduction in the parking, but I think it could be more compact. I was looking at the Winter Valley Expansion Site Plan as Paul was going through this. And if you put them, that plan next to this plan, you will see that the parking lots are right next to one another. So, there's a pretty large area of pavement and exterior lighting. You know, I don't live too far from here, as many of you know. And I know what it looks like to see those parking lots lit up at night, both at Winter Valley and at the hospital. We've talked about, we want to really reduce, so it's inefficient to have a single-loaded parking lot, as we know, because you need the lighting on that on both. I, you've talked about the, how you pulled it away from the wetlands. However, you did have it on both sides before and it fit. So, I still question whether you can tighten that parking to reduce even further the amount of impervious area and therefore the loss of trees and the amount of lighting. So, they kind of really go well together. And I know I've had lots of concern about the way this project is addressing, trying to minimize the impacts, tried to work with the topography. And I still feel that there's a very little progress on that front. So, I'd like for you to demonstrate to us so that when we look at this, then we can say that if an application proposes a design treatment that doesn't entirely consistent with these standards, that we have an opportunity to, to modify or to approve it anyway. Because there's many things in the standards. And I'm looking at the zoning, and this happens to be with the zoning that was in the warrant when it was passed in March of 20, of two years ago, of '22. And there's Section 10, Site Design Standards, A through L. And if any of you in the audience are watching haven't had opportunity to hear what these are, they have a lot to do with the existing terrain, the existing trees, and trying to have something that fits into the site as best as possible within the constraints. There's, we know that there's a lot of constraints on the site. So, I think I would like to see that even if you've done work and you say it doesn't work, that you show that to us and that you provide that to us. So, it's in the record. And when we make a decision, we've known that we've, and we've pushed this or we've questioned this. And we've done the best that we can to meet these requirements. Okay?
Okay.
Okay. And just another question. I think you said there were five, five trucks per day coming?
No.
I mean, per week coming. And then, two, one trash per week and one recycling. So, does that mean those are included in the five so that it's just, so it's in addition?
So, there are five weekly deliveries to the loading dock, one a day. There are two Gordons food trucks, one Baldor produce truck, a bread truck, and a linen truck. Those will deliver once a day to the loading dock down below. The trash and recycling trucks will come separately out to the rear. There will also be a once a month medical supply truck and a once a month cannely meat truck, which will also deliver to the loading dock. And there are occasional other deliveries from Home Depot with supplies and things like that. Those will likely be delivered out to the, the storage facility because there'll be materials like salt and sand in the winter and fertilizers and other things. Those will be likely go straight out to the rear and back. So, five to seven deliveries to the loading dock on a, on a per-week basis. Five, we know, every week, two will show up once, once a month.
Can I, can I come back to parking?
Yeah.
Just, I guess, looking at the plan, Ned, and I, I'm just gonna flip my screen so I can show you what I'm just considering and asking. And maybe you guys can see this too. But was there any consideration for continuing the parking that you had here down along the side of this drive?
I don't think so, but we can certainly take a look.
Can I, here's, here's my thought. You know, you, you look like you have the depth, you know, if you were to continue the, if you were to continue that, that parking here, Ned?
Yeah.
You might be able to eliminate one of these two wings. Now, I, I know you need, I know you need the area for the dumpster. The dumpster could, but I think what you might be able to do is reduce the volume of paved area and take advantage of the roadway, which would replace, you know, the, the turning area for your parking spaces.
Paul, I think I, I understand what he's asking. The question becomes.
Yeah, I can't, I can't see the, I can't see the screen.
And the question, Paul, is that he's asking if you can, we can park on the roadway.
I put the plan up there and you.
Paul, can you put the plan back up on the screen?
Yep.
So, his question is, can we park along the roadway between, crossing wetland to the back?
Right. You see where the 11 spaces?
In, in here?
Yes. You see where the 11 spaces?
Well.
Paul, let me just explain what I'm asking.
I mean, that's a, that's a wetlands crossing.
Okay.
So, we're obligated to keep that as narrow as we can. So, along the driveway itself, no, because we'd be filling wetlands. So, we're, we're crossing wetlands for the purpose of accessing upland areas of the site. Our responsibility to do that is to do it with the least impact possible.
We can. Is that true for that entire crossing, Paul, for that entire length of drive? All that full length of that drive is crossing through a wetland? Or is it some of it?
Well, and then, we've, we've got the non-disturbant zones of the red, right? So, you know, we've basically said, looked at this thing. And where we've done the crossings, we, we've basically treated the non, how, non-disturbant zones the same way so that we don't really have any space on this drive that's eligible for parking until we get about.
Right there.
Past where this 20-foot call-out is. And we've got stormwater going through. So, there's really, there's no practical way to put parking along the driveway.
Okay. Okay.
It's certainly a reasonable question.
And what's the staff count per shift?
We've provided that. I don't have it with me, so I can't answer that question. I'll have that answered the next time.
And we did talk about at one point, giving bus passes or some other form of, you know, encouraging alternative to those driving to work if they can. I don't know if that's something the hospital in Northland would consider.
I don't know what the hospital does in that regard. We can certainly try to make that available. There's, you know, there are, there's a bus that runs on Reed's Dale Road with a stop down the hill from the hospital. You know, it'd be a walk up and, up and through the, the hospital. But that's, that's not a significant thing.
Yeah, that might be something that could be encouraged just to reduce any, any traffic. And, and I didn't mention, traffic will be also another night as, as well. That will be definitely coming back to that again. So.
So, Meredith, before public comment, can you outline what the topics are going to be for the next continuation of this hearing so that people who have an interest in a certain topic are aware when they should participate?
If I could recommend a schedule, we'd like to spend as much time as possible on the 14th. We've got two meetings before in, in March. And we have a town election at the end of April. So, we're, we, we need to try to get through what's left. I think we can have an update, a re-review of traffic. It shouldn't take very long. We have a, we certainly have a peer review that was done for the board that concurs with our traffic that indicates that we're not creating any traffic issues. And we think the board has a right, we have a right to have the board rely on that recommendation. But we think we certainly should spend some time going back through the traffic study. We can do that in conjunction with the fire access discussions with the chief. I think that's a relatively short discussion, but it's certainly an important discussion. And then, we, at the same time, we think we can spend, at least begin with architecture and landscape and have the ability to get as far as we can that evening and then finish that hopefully on the 28th and bring out any other nits and nats.
I was gonna suggest, I, I think architecture is still gonna take a while. We, we did a, sort of a once-over on that. But I think, I think the architecture and the landscape architecture is gonna be really important. So, I think that's gonna take a full evening. And then, we can maybe have a follow-up. So, have that on the 14th and the 28th. Look at fire, police. And probably, you said the engineer is also away this week, so maybe.
No, the engineer's with us.
Sorry, Paul, he was on Zoom, I'm sorry.
He's with us. But the architect was away. The chief, I know, fire chief was away, not available tonight. But our team is fully available for both the 14th and the 28th.
Okay. So, architecture for the 14th, landscape architecture. And do we want to try to get in anything else that evening? I, I feel like that's sort of, that'll be.
I'd like to have the response that I requested in terms of, I mean, it's one, it's the primary driver of so much is. it's the primary driver of so much is, is this-
We can certainly have that presentation ready for the 14th.
Right. And also, just the last piece that I know we've talked about a little bit, but we haven't talked about at length, is this idea of what the floor elevation is set at relative to the cut and fill, and therefore how much basement there is, and the fact that there's fill instead of basement and whether parking could be there. And I know I've asked about it, and I know you've talked about it.
I know we've looked at it very, very-
And so you need, again, you need to present the material that you've said that you've done, so that we have it in the record, in the public record. Because I guess one of the either advantages or disadvantages of being an architect and looking at these plans, if this were my project, I'd be working as hard as I could to not have that parking up on the upper level, and I'd be working to have less retainers. And that's why I've been driving the questions about it. And I just think, you know, you've, your position is that you've done the best you can, but I think we need it in the public record.
I, no qualms with that. What I would say is that if we could, we would, because it would make it a whole lot easier to get through this process. There's no reason why we wouldn't, other than constraints that prevent, that make it too difficult to do. And we'll present, we'll lay that all out. We started to do that previously, but we will, we'll be prepared to present that and have materials available for the public record.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? And then, thank you, Ned, and thank you, Paul, for joining us. And now, if you could stick around, because we have neighbors, and I just want to make sure the butters and neighbors and concerned citizens have time to ask questions. Anyone who would like to speak? Yes, Bard, please join us.
Hi, everyone. I'm Bard Hiresai, 11 Spafford Road. Thank you so much for all your time and effort, everything you do, not just this issue, but everything. You guys are amazing. Thank you, Josh, for bringing up our presentation. I just want to start off by saying, you know, I do agree with some of the comments, and I really appreciate the, you guys digging in so much. Definitely some positive changes here, so we appreciate that. I know Teresa O'Brien, 42 Spafford, who's traveling tonight, will appreciate the change to the dumpster and the generator not being 100 feet from her back porch. That will definitely be a benefit for her. But I think, Josh, if you wouldn't mind, just moving on to the next, the next slide. It's, I guess, a little bit smaller than I anticipated, but these are the kind of a couple bullet points I wanted to cover briefly, and the rest of the presentation is just a bunch of pictures. And so, you know, as you know, one of the main concerns that we have, you know, and for those of you who maybe aren't as familiar with this issue, it's not so much about the site use or memory care, you know, there's, there's a lot of public benefit. We're not necessarily disputing that. The really, a lot of the concerns stem from the fact, as admitted by the applicant and the applicant's counsel, that the site is very wet, the site is very tight. They're having, they're having to jump through hoops and make a lot of compromises to get the size of development that they want to build to fit in this area. And, you know, this is, this is a company, by all means, a very good operator, but they do operate 20 other facilities. You know, they have much deeper pockets than we do. They have a facility in Needham that's 49,000 square feet. So, you know, prior to these changes, which we're still studying, and our Hill Law Council will be submitting a written response to the changes, hopefully by the 14th. You know, there is a precedent from Northbridge to building smaller, smaller communities. The one in Needham, as I said, is 49,000 square feet per Needham Town Records. There's no wetlands in that area. It backs right up to 95. It's 300 feet from the road. You know, none of the constraints that we have here, they have there, and that's been in business, I think, for 12 years. So they can build it smaller if, you know, it's just a question of what, what they're willing to, you know, do from a business perspective. But what I really want to talk about here is, you know, a situation that happened in January, and it's one of the things that is in our appeal to the DEP, and that is, you know, as you know, we're getting more storms, we're getting, you know, less snow, more rain events, heavy precipitation events are up something like 55% in the Northeast in the last 30 years or so, which I presented a few months back. But in January, and this is one of the things we cited in our DEP appeal, we had a situation like what we, who live on Spafford or Highland experience and suffer with, which is flooding of our yards, flooding of our basements, back-to-back storms. January 10th, we got about 2.9 inches of rain, according to the Blue Hills Observatory. A couple days later, January 12th to 13th, we got about one and a half inches of rain, and our yards flooded, you know, basements flooded, the ground saturated. So, you know, despite the modifications, and we do, you know, applaud reductions to impervious surface, I think overall, it was, before was about 83,000 square feet of impervious surface new, introduced, so that's something like two acres. Now, I think Paul Avery said that that would be reduced by about 5,700. So not, you know, not a trivial reduction, but, you know, according to our expert, you know, when they presented these plans a few weeks ago to the DEP, you know, it still results in a 400% increase in the amount of water going into the ground, you know, which is less than before, but it's still four times the water going into the ground. And so the standard that, you know, we're looking for and that, you know, was discussed with the DEP is that the post-project situation shouldn't be any worse than the pre-project, that, you know, if we want to limit the adverse impacts so that, you know, not permanently raise the water table for all the neighboring properties, which is already a problem, that, you know, the amount of water going into the ground and that recharge, you know, shouldn't be increased by an order of magnitude. And I don't think Paul presented it, but one of the things that was mentioned was also, and we'll await the new drainage plans, but they are in response to this point about these back-to-back successive storms and the rate of flow from their infiltration system, it's something the DEP is looking at and has looked at in other cases. We want to make sure that it can handle, you know, back-to-back storms, because as we know, when there's an unsettled weather pattern, you have, you know, we saw it in July 2021, it was Hurricane Elise, tropical storm Elise dumps three inches of rain, then less than a week later, another storm dumps three inches of rain. These things are happening, they're going to happen more often. So those are kind of the main points, and then the next two sides are just the pictures, if you don't mind, Josh. So this is 179 Highland Street. This is the Wells family. My neighbor here, Tajah, I believe, is in attendance, supplied this picture. In the background is the Bacardi House. So this is upland to the site. So this is on January 13th. This is Tajah's backyard. That's essentially a pond forming there, and even under the leaves, if you were to walk there, you're sloshing around in water. You know, so this is, I believe, to the, we would call to the south of the site. And so, if you don't mind, Josh, going to the next one. So then this is the, along Highland Street in front of the Bacardi property, 137 Highland. So this, these are, I believe, designated as wetlands, and they're adjacent to the wetlands on 107, 111 Highland. You know, this is what happens when you get three inches of rain. This water stays here for weeks. Next slide, please. And now we get, you know, now we move further north, and we get to the site itself, and that's me leaning over the gate and zooming in onto, to the right of the driveway. This is, you know, right where that shed is, and it's, and there's, you know, extensive flooding, you know, essentially a pond of standing water stretching all the way over to the area that's being currently used as parking. Sorry, do you mind just going back one second? So this is, I believe, is also an area that they're planning to have, you know, add as additional flood storage. I mean, so however, today, it is, it is being used as flood storage. It, you know, it remains wet for a long, long time. That building is completely submerged in water. So, you know, this water is not flowing off of the site, as we've heard in the past, that, you know, what happens in a 10-year storm, 100-year storm, all the water's just going to run off. A lot of water does run off, certainly, but a lot of water stays, and it, and it sits, and it just doesn't go into the ground because the ground is completely saturated. So this is, you know, directly on the site, and then we can, we can jump to the next one. So now this is across, directly across the street with 138 Highland and 42 Spafford. You know, the, the front yard here on the left, in the sidewalk of 138 Highland, you know, essentially all water. You know, you step on that, you're, you're getting stuck, you're in, you're in, you know, large sloshing around. The, the brick house on the right here, those are the discharge from the sump pumps at 42 Spafford, and at one point on the 13th, they, you know, disconnected because the, the, the ground, so Spafford goes downhill in two directions. It crowns somewhere around, I think it's 27 Spafford, and then, you know, then it starts going downhill to Reed'sdale. But from, from 27 on, or maybe it's the house next to it, it starts, it goes downhill towards Highland. So these houses that live right on Highland with, you know, at the top of Spafford, if you will, they can't pump their water uphill. They have to pump their water towards Highland, you know, otherwise it's just all going to come right back to their foundations. So in this situation, and this has happened several times in the last few years, you know, the ground is so saturated that those pumps struggle to, you know, the pressure starts to build that there's no, there's, you know, they can't keep pushing water out. So, so this system failed, and the water started flooding the yard. You know, there's no place to put the water, because the other, the other alternative is just to let the basement fill with several feet of water. So, next slide, please, Josh. And this one, if you would just indulge me for a second, this is, I think, what illustrates kind of what we're worried about with large-scale development. These properties, if you, if you go with 27, 25, 21, 17, 15, 11, Spafford, they all abut the hospital and the, the office buildings there and the parking lot there. So if you look in the picture on the left, that's 21 Spafford, and that fence there on the other side of that fence, other than some Japanese knotweed, and arborvitae, there's a parking lot directly behind you. And then, and so if you wouldn't mind just clicking on that link, Josh, it's a one-minute video, and then, you know, we're almost done.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you.
Might, you might have to, yep.
I took my own group photos.
That can be embarrassing.
We might, but another time.
Also very. Thank you. There you go. So this is the, the back of the property, but if you, you know, as you start to see the, my neighbor here sloshing around, you'll see that, you know, the entire backyard is just completely saturated with water. As you can imagine, you know, this water is trying to drain wherever it can, and, you know, that includes basements, and that, you know, includes neighboring properties that are downhill from here. And again, this is near the top of Spafford, so we're kind of at a higher point than, than say where my house is at 11. But you can see water flowing downhill. And so, you know, with so much impervious surface around us, I think this is, this is what we're living with. So this is happening regardless. So, you know, we've heard in prior meetings, you know, that they acknowledge it's a macro problem, that's not necessarily our fault. What we're asking for is, don't make our problem worse, you know? And so that's why we're looking for any opportunity to reduce impervious surface, any opportunity to improve the drainage design such that we are not increasing the water table and we're not removing places where water needs to drain, because there's just so much water in this hill. And, you know, this is a, you know, like I said, 2.9 inches plus one and a half inches three days later. You know, Rhode Island got five inches during the same period. You know, if we got five inches instead of three, we'd be, you know, crying even more than we were. So just, and Josh, if you don't mind, just, I think I just had one or two more slides, but thank you for bringing that up, and the gymnastics to make it work. So that's, you know, properties that abut a parking lot. Yeah, and then this is, as you go down the hill, this is 15 Spafford, my neighbor Dan O'Neil here, the flooding around his, his back door. And then this is the bottom of Spafford, and the erosion and the washout of the road and the sides of the road. The DPW has tried repeatedly to refill areas and come in and pack and plant, and now they're, I talked to them, they're going to come plant more grass, because we discussed the erosion is just so out of control. You need to put, you know, some kind of plantings in to try to prevent it. Next slide, please. I mean, they even went so far as to bring sandbags on our street in between the two storms. So, I mean, this is, you know, whether we're talking backyards flooding, front yards, erosion on the street, there's just a tremendous amount of water that we're dealing with. And then finally, I think I just have one more. Yeah, so this is just a, an illustration of kind of what we're talking about. The last, I think this is the first street, the foundation, they did a peer-reviewed precipitation model, and the, you know, as we've talked about before, the stormwater standards that are being used right now are, you know, don't, don't take into account the changes we're seeing. The new, you know, NOAA's one in 100-year flooding, it can now be expected in some places every eight years. I think our region, it's, you know, they're saying every 10 to 15. So we're getting these crazy storms, and, you know, the Northeast is going to be impacted, you know, among the worst. And then, and then just one last one, if you'll bear with me. This one, and thank you, Meredith, for bringing up traffic, and, you know, I think we would very much appreciate the opportunity to have the applicant's traffic engineer, and I think Ned did an excellent job himself, talking about some practical solutions on traffic that, you know, I think they were on the prior application that was resubmitted. So it would be great to have that discussion, you know, under this application, because I think they offered some very good suggestions. This is just one example of, you know, you know, a week or two after that storm, this is a typical morning on Spafford. I think one, one house on our street had some work going on, and the entire street, you know, the morning traffic jam, as we call it, where you really can't pull out of your driveway, you can't move, because the street is just so narrow. And so, you know, all efforts to prevent the 2,000 vehicles a week that would be net new to the neighborhood from, and with a driveway proposed right at the top of our street, you know, we were just desperate for that, to, you know, not have that traffic come up our street. So thank you, thank you for your time. Any questions, I'm always here. Thank you.
So did you happen to go to the Traffic Committee or the Selectmen? I know the Selectmen just approved some speed bumps on Governors. So at the, you know, it seems like they're now, you know, interested in putting in speed bumps.
Yes.
So I would think, I think Governors has sidewalks on either side, and they're still getting speed bumps, and I believe Spafford does not have sidewalks.
Not yet.
So I would think that a road that does not have sidewalks might be higher priority for getting speed bumps?
That's a fantastic idea. Maggie, thank you. Yes, we're looking into it, and we're asking for help from, you know, I actually bumped into Cheryl, and she made a similar suggestion. I think Boston, we have an article, Boston is introducing 500 streets with speed bumps, and they're supposedly designed to not interfere with, with snow plowing and other things that we're concerned. We had requested something like that before. I think in the, in the presentation Ned gave last year with their traffic engineer, they actually had some data on a case study in Watertown where they implemented speed bumps, and the impact was, you know, significant reduction in volume and speed. So as a, as a, as an option, I think that's a fantastic idea. So we're very much behind that.
And I think maybe the fire department want the speed humps, not speed bumps. I think that's their preferred. So I know it always comes down to cost, but this probably wouldn't come out of the town budget, but maybe the applicant to get a-
I would think they're less expensive than sidewalks. I don't know, but certainly, you know, we'll, we're very open to it.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Good, thank you. Ned, did you want to respond to, or answer any questions?
Quickly respond that I get the presentation, but it's completely irrelevant to what we're doing here. That was all in the purview of the Conservation Commission. It's now before DEP. Issues of water, stormwater, that's DEP. This board is no further jurisdiction to, to deal with that issue.
Do you want to, there was a site walk. Do you want to just?
Yes.
I know you don't have details from the results of that, but that might be good to address, that it is before DEP at this point, and-
Yeah, DE, as you know, DEP, butters appealed the order of conditions that was granted by the Conservation Commission. Conservation Commission found that the project was completely compliant with stormwater standards and properly addressed all of the impacts to wetlands and wetland resources. They've appealed. DEP is taking a fresh look at it, as it does. They, was a site walk the day before yesterday, attended by two people from DEP, Arthur Doyle from the Mass, the Milton Conservation Commission, Arthur Allen, who was our wetland scientist, and myself. Neighbors were not present, although we understand, they were certainly notified at, at the time that it was going to occur, and, but for reasons I don't know, they did not attend. We spent about an hour and 20 minutes. We did a clockwise walk around the entire site, showed them the specific crossings, the location of the two intermittent streams. We laid out, we had a plan that showed how things related to what's on the ground physically, and at close of which- And at close of which Pam Merrill, who was the DEP lead on this, said that, you know, this was for my purpose to see the site and I will be digging into the materials as I can and move forward on the decision.
So, it's great, thank you. I just wanted to let the public know there was a, it's moving forward with the DEP. So, anyone else who would like to speak, join? Yes.
Hi, everybody, thank you for your time.
Welcome.
Gene Irwin, 120 Highland Street. I, for one, didn't know about that sidewalk yesterday. I would love to have been on it. I have a number of issues. I thank Bard for his beautiful PowerPoint. If you, and I'll save Josh the effort of going back. But if y'all remember the wetlands to the left of Bacardi's driveway, I walk my dog virtually every night down that direction, even when we've had several days of just dry sunny weather. It's wet next to Karen's driveway. However, my neighbor's across the street and Buckingham is the next street after Spafford. There virtually isn't a crust on the hill. It's pretty much flat with Highland and then it runs on down to Reed's Dale. And I'm amazed at how much of apparently the water from the Bacardi property travels across the street. Because I say you could have a dry spell, it can be dry for days and you'll see there's some pumps in the water all over the sidewalk. The water's definitely traveling under the road towards Reed's Dale. It's plain as day. And both of those houses on either side of the top of Buckingham where it abuts Spafford have put it almost like they're throwing manholes to try to catch the water and deal with it, as I say. So I just, as I say, I wish I had known and I think maybe Tusha Wells and others probably didn't, moved in and attend. Because I've hit every walk over the past four years that I could. And this is the first one I've missed that I know of. But also I'm concerned about the drainage system for this building. As I quote specifically says, these are supposed to be gravity-fed new construction drains. This is not gravity-fed. Secondly, they're talking about putting in sewer djectives. And that might be fine in some cases, but I can't find in our town bylaws or in the state code where you can go down three streets. Their new driveway is going to be considered a street by our town definition. Then up Highland Street and then down Spafford. And if I just may cite you the state code, this is General Laws Part One, Title 14, Chapter 83. A city or town may install and maintain in the way they're in where sanitary sewers are constructed such connecting sewers within the limits of such way as may be necessary to connect any estate which abuts upon the way. The memory clinics entitled to connect to a sewer, provided it's in Highland Street, they're not allowed just to go willy-nilly all over the place. And there's supposed to be conformity. It goes on to say, "When an extension of the existing town's sanitary system is not practicable, private on-site sewage treatment system shall be provided." And that's exactly what we have here. They're not entitled to go down any street they want in town just because they can afford to. Highland Street, myself and my neighbors waited, especially my neighbors, waited decades and decades that road to get repaved. It was finally repaved, it's pristine. The same thing with Spafford Road. When I moved in there about 12 years ago, that road looked like it hadn't been paved in 30, 40 years. That's a freshly paved road. These folks think they can dig it all up. So if I go back to, you know, that MBTA thing on Elliott Street, wouldn't that be great? If everyone on Elliott Street, if there was no main sewer main on Elliott, you could have 50 different sewer mains going up to Oak Street and to Valley Road, the whole bit. And the, our own town bylaw says, continuity of the system where adjacent property is not subdivided, provisions should be made for the extensions of the drainage system and other utilities by continuing mains the full length of streets. If they want to put in sewer, run it all the way down Highland Street and folks like myself can tie into it because my property hasn't been subdivided yet. The verdicts next to me has a paper street next to them. Tusha Wells further up the street, it says they can do it. They need to put a main in the entire street. And I say they don't have any right, to me it's spot zoning. If you're going to let them have a main in three streets, their street being one, Highland Street being two, and Spafford, this is spot zoning. We're not going to allow everyone in town to travel three streets because it's convenient. This is not practicable. And to me, we said day one on this whole thing, long before many of you folks were even elected, going back to the very beginning, L.L.S. and I said, "You folks don't have the infrastructure to do this property." We said, "Go talk to Winter Valley." They did. Winter Valley wants no part of their sewer djeta system. Also, the, our town bylaws say they need a 50-foot right away just to get in there. And if you think about it, it makes perfect sense. This board, I'm sure, is familiar with the Shade Tree Advisory Committee. When you go down this driveway off of Highland Street, it's 22 feet wide of pavement and a five-foot sidewalk, where are the trees? There's no trees. They don't have room for the trees. And if you go back to looking at the front entrance of this memory clinic, you walk out the front door, there's a crosswalk through a little roundabout and over to the other side. There certainly should be sidewalks on both sides of this access road, at least going up to Highland. If there's an emergency there, everyone's going to run out the front door and they're probably going to bang a right immediately going up the driveway because there's no, and there's no sidewalk there. But in all likelihood, you're going to fire into something, block on the sidewalk right in front of the front door. The applicants, Mike, has already said, you know, when the trucks come in, they're going to stop right in front of the front door to go in and get, you know, permission to go down to the loading dock. And the loading dock, but I say while they're in there, they're blocking the sidewalks or the crosswalk. So again, the ADA accessibility, I also don't believe town meeting approved parking over in the hospital lot. We have no, now we've got to study a whole nother property. This is unfair. A brand-new development like this should have its own parking. Cheryl Tigias, months and months ago, brought up underground parking. And the bottom line is, this is just too big, it doesn't fit. And it should be disqualified. And I can go on even further, but you said you're going to have these other meetings on the landscape architecture and that sort of thing. But to me, they still don't have sewer. And the other thing too, which I think is most important, is everyone is aware that on a slippery day, any one of these delivery trucks can block the entrance. This development has no fire road, which our fire lane's supposed to be 20 feet wide. They don't have it, period. They don't have an emergency escape. Winter Valley has an emergency escape hatch. Seasons, the hospice right up the street, the little place, has a second egress to get out of it. There's no second egress to this property. I was hoping after all these renovations, they would have brought a driveway in front of the barn or something like that. But even still, if you go back to the DEP, our own bylaws, which are under the roads and ways, under the purview of this planning board, says no altering water courses. And when this whole thing first started out, there were several rain gardens along the Bacardi border coming down towards Highland Street. Those rain gardens are all gone. Now they're talking about a giant pond in front of the barn. And I say that the driveway to that barn has been in existence for more than 20 years, maybe 120 years. And I say, they, the Conservation Commission made a mistake when they thought they could alter that waterway. They can't. It's not, they try to get fancy with the language as to say something like refurbish or correct it, but Mother Nature has already claimed where that water goes. And I say that driveway's been there for more than 20 years. If it was less than 20 years, they could go in there, spruce it all up and add to it. But they're definitely altering the waterways throughout this thing. So, to me, they have a lot of challenges. And I say the ADA accessibility now, to me, applies beyond this property over to the hospital property. When you cross the street, you go up into the woods, there's no lighting. It doesn't meet ADA compliance. When you get down the hospital driveway, there's no sidewalks there. But we're all powerless to force the hospital to do anything. And earlier today, I was over here in the building department and I was reading one of Crystal Martin's letters. She lives in the house between my house and the hospital. In 2005 or '07, she was complaining that back in 2021, 2004, about the knotweed that the hospital's never done anything about. So I said, "The hospital, in my opinion, as a director abutter to this, has been maybe the world's worst neighbor." When there was graffiti painted on the front of the barn, the barn's painted beige. Did they bother trying to paint it beige? No, they painted it white. The place over there is a disgrace. It always has been a disgrace. To me, they're doing demolition by neglect. And, yeah, they went to the historical commission, they've made no effort to preserve the barn over there, which is historic. They've made no effort to preserve the stables. There's nothing in the paper, hey, how about, you know, move on the stable to another location in town? As I say, I said years ago that this application should have been disqualified by the previous planning boards on its face, and I still maintain that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Thank you.
Nadine Hannah has had her hand up in the chat. I don't know if you want to...
We have, all right. Do you want to go, and then Nadine, sorry. Nadine, we will get you next, and if you want to, sorry.
Sure. Thank you. My name's Manette Donovan, I live at 16 Spafford Road. Thank you all for your serious consideration. I can tell from the questions that you really have listened to our concerns and are attempting to address them. So we're grateful for your efforts. Briefly, I would just like to say that we, anything that impacts negatively our homes, I believe that you have the discretion to deal with. So that includes this water issue. I'm grateful that there have been some changes. However, looks like about a 5% reduction approximately. I know these just came in on the 15th of February. We've been asking for a long time for some changes here. These came in after, unfortunately, it was an appeal to the DEP. But we're glad to see that there are, there are some changes. I would suggest, though, that there need to be quite a few more in light of the fact Bard didn't mention, and I'm going to be brief today, but there's a tremendous amount of fill that needs to go into this property. I think that's some, there's a lot of things that the DEP is going to need to look into. So I would expect there are going to be further changes. And in light of the fact that we already have so many issues with water and traffic, I think that the process needs to kind of slow down here pending that DEP appeal process because we're talking about something that is very likely going to change more. And you have a tremendous amount on your plate. So if we pack the agenda with all of these things over the next couple of weeks, A, a packed agenda means we are at a disadvantage because we don't have adequate time to respond. And also, you can't attend to all the business that you have at hand. It's just unfair for everybody. So I don't think that this, it's appropriate for this to be steamrolled through. I think we need a significant amount of time here, especially in light of that appeal being pending. So, traffic, again, is a current issue. A statement that they're going to all sign something, that they won't take a left turn and they're going to, the hospital's going to put up cameras, is just... I question the effectiveness of that in light of the fact that, right now, we've been for years trying to work with the hospital to try to decrease traffic. And I think even, they have gone to the hospital as part of this process, the developer, saying, "Could you work on this?" And it has not, just yesterday, we've got three ambulances going down the street within like a five-minute period. So, I'm not going to go with the long slideshow tonight, MBTA's next. But it's occurring and I don't see, if they want to put a deed restriction in there, I don't know how that they could do that, how they could, but maybe that would be enforceable. I don't think a signature from an employee that they're going to take a left turn or a vendor is enforceable or meaningful. And so I would say that we have not adequately addressed the traffic issue. I did see a letter that came in with some deliveries and there was some talk about that. And maybe we should have specified more that it's kind of trucks overall because I don't see anything about, there's going to need to be maintenance to the property, water, plumbing, heating, residents moving in, residents moving out, ambulances taking someone to physical therapy, to a doctor's appointment, to wherever they need to go. Packages coming in. Those aren't in this count here, this is like the bare minimum. So I apologize to the extent we stated deliveries, it would be trucks that need to arrive at the property in addition to just food and medical and linens. So I would just say, in closing, we are going to be dealing with this forever. We all bought these old homes, we're fixing them up as slowly as we can. We love our neighborhood, we love the fact that our kids can walk to the high school from there. And where, we've put a lot into this neighborhood. And so, when we walk up that street, this is what we're going to see indefinitely in addition to the issues with flooding, et cetera. So I would implore you to please give us adequate time on the agenda and our council adequate time and move slowly. And I thank you for all you do.
And then Nadine, we can invite her to join us?
Hi, everyone, Nadine Hannah, 11 Spafford Road. Thank you once again for all that you do for the town. And it was great seeing so many of you either on foot or while I was driving through and recognizing faces in person, in addition to these meetings and, you know, the occasional food center, you know, spotting. As for tonight, and actually, I'm going to be speaking towards that letter that Maddy just referenced as well, that, the one which indicates estimated, you know, trips, deliveries, et cetera. And as Maddy said, I agree that it's understated. If you remember, and I briefly, I have a lifelong experience in food production, manufacturing, distribution and sales. It's the business that my family has been in. My father was a bread delivery driver prior to starting his own food manufacturing company and now as an adult, I represent both his company and a number of other large local partners who specialize in both retail and food service, food manufacturing, distribution. With that, where there's a receiving dock, there's a receiving log. It would be wonderful to see a log of dates, times, vendors, weekly, which would reflect the number of deliveries specific to, call it the Newburyport facility. If you look at the vendors listed there, you've got produce and bread each being listed as a one-trip per week provider. Now, bread, I sell bread. A slice, a loaf of bread is typically on food service, call it 22 slices, right? You've got 75 or so people at any given time who are living in the facility, three square meals a day. Bread can stay good on average about seven days, right? But when you're providing bread to a warehouse distribution center, which is essentially what food service is pulling from, that bread arrives, it doesn't go out the very next day, the same day, or even the day after. Sometimes it sits two and three days. So I find it hard to believe that that bread is only, is going to be only sent out to the facility once a week. Produce, if you look at a quick produce date chart, before I tell you the days on that, on the Newburyport website, it says that they specialize in three square meals a day with brain-healthy ingredients. Brain-healthy typically equals fresh food, right? Fresh produce. Fresh produce, again, maybe berries are two to three days, bananas about five. You get into your vegetables, you can get a couple of weeks off of them, but they don't necessarily have the most, you know, brain-healthy essential ingredients that we're talking about. So again, I find that hard to believe that that's going to be a once or twice, I mean, just once a week limitation of delivery. But my opinion or my industry knowledge is about as thin as this one piece of paper that says, you know, on average, we receive these numbers. Why don't we get the requested receiving log? In addition to, I would recommend that you ask them what their cooler capacity is per square foot, the freezer capacity per square foot and the dry storage capacity per square foot, along with the Thai hi pallet counts that they're receiving on average with these distributions, with these POs. That'll show you about how big, what's the mass of the product receiving? Where is it being stored? Is it really something that is stored in whatever temporary conditions they're, you know, citing for that amount of time? And are we really feeding people fresh food? And are we really feeding people fresh food just on day one and on seven? We're hoping all the food that doesn't net out typically. You need more than one day a week of fresh food distribution. Also in that, I would look at a visitor's log for maintenance. There, I'm not sure what the exact word for that would be. I would... There's some kind of a maintenance log, just adding on to what Mandy had just said in regards to additional vehicles that are attending the facility. And I think that might help you see, you know, how often do they need their, either their own service trucks or other vendor service trucks coming in to help out on the property? And then, I was going to make a note to you guys on routes. So, routes for distribution. If you're a one-week per, one-visit-per-week customer, you're not a large customer. No matter if you've got five locations or 10 locations, you're not a large customer in the respect that we, as people who are providing food service, are going to specialize, customize our delivery schedules to accommodate your needs. When they're saying they've got all the flexibility for the day and the time, you cannot call me up as provider of that service and say, I want you here every Wednesday at 10 o'clock in the morning. I will say to you, I'm very sorry, but you are a stop on a route. And not everyone can be the first customer. There are other customers that are going to come before you and that are going to come after you to make that truck as cost-effective and fuel-efficient as possible. So, I... There's some murkiness, I believe, in that claim. The linen service, I asked my father from a food manufacturing standpoint. He said, when we were at our smallest employee count of about 12 employees a day, and those employees are each changing, putting on a fresh uniform every day, sometimes twice a day, depending on, you know, if they get... For us, it'd be food materials on them for customers, for professionals in healthcare. It could be any number of things. And towels, that were 50 pieces of towel per bag, so speaking to linens. He said, when we're only 12 employees, we would get once-a-week delivery. When you got up to 100 employees, you're doing four to five deliveries per week days of the same amount of uniform per associate. So, if we're looking at 70, 75 employees, maybe we should also be asking for a breakdown, like an org chart. How many of these people are office staff? They're walking in in their suit and tie every day. How many of these people are uniformed employees that are going to need that service? And also, the linens are provided as per their website as something that Evita or North Bridge is going to be getting laundered for their residents. So, you've got bed linens, you've got their own home towels, you've got kitchen staff towels who are providing all the food service. We did see the Crown Linens truck today come down in between two additional ambulances in addition to the three ambulances that Mandy spoke to earlier. So, there are a lot of things that don't just have to be statements. They can provide you backup for this. They can provide you from perhaps the Newburyport Center, also their linen service log. You know, that's something that can easily be done. You can blackout any cost information. Nobody needs to know that. But how many times were they received? How many pallets did they bring in? Where is it all stored and detained? And if they're citing fewer trips, fewer deliveries, one of the reasons that they might be speaking to not being able to reduce the size of the building might not just be the number of beds, but also, if you're speaking to storing all of this onsite weekly, all of your linens for the week, all of your fresh food for the week, all your frozen food for the month, I believe, was in that letter? Of once-per-month meat distribution for 75 people, times three meals, times seven days a week? That, to me, would have to be an excessively large storage facility on the property. That's it. That's all I've got for you guys tonight. Thank you for listening to me and again, for everything you do.
Thank you so much. Okay, so it's nine o'clock. So, I think at this point, we can take a break. We will continue this hearing if the board feels ready to make a motion to continue this until the 14th. Did you have a follow-up question?
No, I just wanted to see if you wanted to take a look at how many hands for people who may not have been able to speak so that we can adequately plan for our next meeting?
Yeah. Was there anyone else who's in person this evening who would like to speak to this on this item? Yep. Any other hands up on this?
Okay.
All right. Good. Good thing. So, with that, I would entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for 111 Highland Street to the date of March 14th at 7:05.
So moved.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Doesn't matter.
Well, for the minutes.
Oh, I'll take it. Sorry, Jim.
All right, Maggie seconded it. Thank you all for joining us this evening. That's great. So, now we can open our 10... Public hearing for 10 Bassett Street Site Plan Approval Modification, continued from January 25th. Welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Sorry to keep you standing for a little bit.
No, that's okay.
If you were, I'll take one of the chairs at least for a minute.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
And welcome. And if you could just introduce yourself for those and your...
Sure. Michael Modestino, and I represent the McNosa family. Julie M. Foley, Julie M. Foley, and Michael V. McNosa, trustees of the McNosa 1983 Family Trust. I'm also here with Anthony Maggiore. He's the contractor. He was here last time on January 25th, so he can answer any questions that you may have as well.
Okay, thank you. And go ahead if you want to introduce the changes. That's great. Welcome.
Well, you know, we've looked at the plan based upon the discussion the last time we were here. You guys had some great ideas, we thought. And Anthony has worked with the architect to try to come up with another plan. And it wasn't quite what he wanted. And unfortunately, we didn't get the plan until Tuesday of this week, and I brought it right over to Josh as soon as I had it, and I apologize for any delays in that. But let me give you some, an outline of it. Basically, we're going to try to put a roof on the top of the entry area into the proposed stair area where the platform is on the second floor. And this will provide shelter from inclement weather and to provide lighting over the entry platform in front of the stairs and down onto the stairway below. Then, the structural part of the second floor platform, the stair stringers and the supporting posts will be made of fabricated steel in order to be safe and comply with the building code, according to the contractor who told me as such. The finishings on the stair threads, the top of the staircase platform, the railing system will be constructed in an AZAC system. And this will allow the platform and stairway to conform with the existing style of the building, which is more residential-looking in nature. It's a commercial building, but, you know, they want it to look like a residential stairway, and that's the goal. More space will be created for the bottom-level entry to the stairway. The landing, we talked about this last time, and there was concern that the landing was too small. So, we've expanded the landing area. It will be six feet, six inches in total width and a length of up to nine feet, 10 inches in the extension area of where that is. Lastly, the stairway will have a large planter on the top of the entrance, the stairway on the second level. And with planters in the ground level, with hangar greenery on the side of the stairway railings, a bench will be constructed on the landing area for customers. So, I think we've addressed most of the things that we talked before about getting some planting up there and making it look like the rest of the building. And Anthony can answer any contract-type of issues, construction-type of issues that you may want to inquire about. And that's what I have for now unless you have any other questions.
I did have a question at the bottom of the stair. We had talked about how close it was to the curb and the catch basin and the parking space. Did that get adjusted at all, or is that the same here?
No, it was, yes. Anthony Maggiore, contractor, builder for the project. The initial one was close, I believe it was under five feet at the tight point.
Right.
Now, we've got, I believe, it's six foot six, and then it flares out to nine foot nine, is it?
Nine ten.
Or nine ten.
I have a large set of plans if anybody wants to...
And the reason for that is because the...
Do you want to take a look at that?
Six foot nine, ten.
How much room over here?
Six foot three or six foot six to...
Yeah.
Right, all right. Six foot three is the tightest point, and then it jumps out to nine ten.
So, that is better than it was.
The reason being is, when the architect first went to do the drawing, she didn't actually have the actual total rise proper. Because of the way it's constructed now, she couldn't get a line inside the building. So, I went with her, and we set up a laser and got the accurate measurement. So, we were able to cut back two rises. Because, yeah, she had a measurement that was off from the platform at ground level to the space we're going to.
Well, thank you for confirming what that rise is. That six foot three is to the tread or to the railing extension?
To the railing.
So, that's to that...
There's a railing extension on this side here, and we have nine ten on that side.
But you don't, you have to have the railing on both sides, right?
Yeah. It's, she went to the railing extension.
All right. So, if we could, if we could get an enlargement of that with, so that it's clear what those dimensions are too, I think that would be helpful. You provided one previously, but not with this update.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay. Any other? But otherwise, I think that you did a... The architect did a good job responding to the concerns that we expressed, sort of a compromise between the type of construction that you want to use here, given that you're above the roof of a one-story building below it, and you need that span capability. So, that part of it, I think you've addressed it to my satisfaction, anyway.
I think it looks great. The question I had was, the materials of the tread, you changed the railings. Did, are the tread materials...
It's an AZAC material.
It is? Okay. Which will look much better. I think you had a metal previously that...
It was a steel grade type.
I was worried about...
It's a new one. Yeah. Actually, it's a new system that I've never used. The architect had drawn it in. It's one that if a woman in heels, the field doesn't go through the grade. Yeah. So, that's why she...
Slippery during...
And then, thinking about it, we have an AZAC material on a platform on the rear of the building. There's that emergency egress and up top, and it looks great and wears well. It's really a nice product.
Just have to make sure that your slip resistance...
Yeah, that's what I was going to ask.
No, they do have, yeah.
They have, it can be slippery.
They have the one that has the...
They have, yeah. It has a texture to it?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's consistent in color? I know you were going with a...
Yeah, it's consistent. It'll be a color that's complementary to the building and what have you. And we'll probably end up with a black rail system, but it'll be the AZAC again. And it's a nice, it's a, it's a much warmer feel than steel.
Yeah. Yes, definitely.
And you'll do AZAC risers and skirt boards?
Yes.
They'll all be wrapped in it?
Yes, because what will happen is the structural components will be steel. And then, what we'll do is use pressure-treated sleepers, okay? And we'll bolt them down in so that everything is screwed and bolted. So, it'll look like a finished residential set of stairs when it's done.
Yes. Definitely the direction.
I just have one question. The written description of the changes you made, the stringers will be steel.
Correct.
Are you wrapping the underside of it?
The underside?
Yeah. You know, I think a lot of, a lot of the stairs is going to look residential, but the underside certainly won't, right? You're going to have steel stringers.
Well, there'll be steel string... Yeah, I mean, that's, that's an easy fix. That's an easy thing to do.
You're going to let water get through, though?
Yeah.
Yeah. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, it's...
They can do tube steel, and the tube steel gets painted, and it looks like painted wood, too.
I mean, even if I did wood, it would be, it would have been painted, so it would have... But the point I'm getting at is, there is a product that will allow the water to come out that we could put on the back of the stairs and finish it. Because to your point, in the corridor, looking out, you know, from the, when you're coming out of CVS, you'll see the underside of the stairs.
Yeah.
Even though they're tucked to the sides.
Yeah. I mean, it's a nice... As I look at it, that's a pretty visible part of the stair, the underside of the stair.
The underside.
I mean, anybody walking on the at-grade surface is going to see it. You know, I honestly don't, I don't even know that that's part of our, you know...
No, no, no. When it's said and done, I'm sure you'll be happy with what we produce over there. I think you've been happy with everything we've done with the building at this point.
So, you're saying there is a way to not expose the metal, to conceal that?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you did slats like lattice, like four-inch, half-inch space in between or something?
Well, I don't want to close them in because I want that area open under there because there's a fire connection.
Underneath, not, not...
Oh, you mean underneath, going this way, yes. Follow the regular stair shore. Yeah?
I like it. I mean, I think the flower boxes look great. Are you planning on lighting, like putting a recessed can in the roof or anything? Or is there going to be any lighting on this?
Correct. There's going to be lighting in the roof. That was the main thought process behind putting the roof on top over the landing, not on to give you a little protection in the building protection before you walk in, as well as being able to, again, when it's raining, we can... I had it designed with a hip roof so I could bring the gutter back around to the back roof, which will go down the drainage system, so we don't have water coming down the front. Also, it gives a nice... I'll probably frame it cathedral so it doesn't feel like it's right on top of you. And we'll either put a nice fixture up there or some type of recessed light to wash not only the platform but the stairs. So, it was able to address three components that I was concerned about going up the top.
Speaking of lighting, is this, is the building department going to consider this an egress stair? And therefore, you have to meet the building code for minimum foot candle level on an egress stair?
For minimum what?
The lighting level, the foot candle?
It's not considered an egress stair, but if I have to comply with anything to do with lighting, I'm happy to do it.
Just, it'd just be a question of how you do it, where you mount it.
The, the main reason for this stair was to provide, I thought, what would be a more comfortable egress to that second level, as well as, if God forbid, there was ever emergency up there, it did serve as a second egress. It's not mandated by the building department for us to have this stairway.
Tim, I'm sorry. I didn't ask you on the last public hearing. Did you have any comments on this that you would like to add? If you made it through?
Nothing that you all haven't already addressed.
Okay. Great. Thank you. All right. So, you would like to see a blown-up and expansion of that portion of the stairwell? Is that what you're asking?
Yes, where it is the site plan so that these dimensions can be legible and that we know that it's to the handrail extension and not to the tread because the handrail extension will be the limiting factor on people being able to get by, right? I just think it's good for us to know, so, and have it in the record.
Is this something you'd like to make a motion to approve, subject to receiving that? Or would you like to have that prior to making a motion? Or if the board feels ready?
I mean, I feel ready to approve upon your request.
I'd like to see it, though, because if we close the public hearing, then we can't take another document in as part of the hearing, as part of the public record. So, I don't want to extend it too long for you. If you could turn it around, is two weeks going to be the difficult?
I'd be able to keep it done that quickly, right?
Yeah, I could, I could get that done.
Okay.
So, we're talking about coming back for another meeting on this?
On the 14th? Yeah, just one more.
Great, briefly, yeah.
We're showing six foot three. Even if the rail comes out another foot, you're still going to have over five feet to walk by at the closest point. And you're going to have five feet there, and we already have nine foot 10 there. And that's at just one point. Once you get by the rail, you're back out to almost seven feet of a landing. So, it's one small point that you're going to have probably five foot, at least five foot three, five foot six, if that wasn't to the rail extension.
If the idea is that you're going to have this stair for convenience, then it's the occasional user. But if you, the idea is also to have it in an emergency. The way people exit something in an emergency is they're going to be in a hurry, and they're going to try and get out as fast as possible. And if they get caught up here by some displays outside, they're going to have to make their way this way. That's really the building official will take a look at. But I do think it's something that if you've got this as tight as you can, which is what you've said today, then it's just good to record what those dimensions are. The building officials should see them, anyway.
Yeah, I understand.
If it's less than six three, it's not a deal breaker. It's just you want it specified, is what you're saying.
So that is not less than five, you know, I mean, what's the six, six three measured to?
No, I get what you're asking, as well.
Is it the edge of curb? Is it the, you know?
That's, that's the other issue. It's, it's, it's an open parking spot. Beyond that, it's not a restriction to a wall or a knee wall or a planter that you're walking through. So there's that aspect as well.
Right.
But no, we can, I'll get on them to get that.
Well, before we, before we go any further along, I think the question that I'm asking myself, is this really, are we out of our lane? You know, code compliance is, is the building commissioner's responsibility. And, you know, and having, having, some of the things we're talking about, isn't it his, you know?
If we wanted to make it subject to approval by the, the building official for review of those dimensions, because it's, you know, the question of whether this gets placed in this exact location without any other architectural modifications. It could be moved over closer to the wall, the dimension gets larger, you know? So if the building official's okay with it, and if he's not okay with it, then it should come back for us to review.
And your concern is closing the public hearing, that if we close the public hearing and vote on that, that, that makes it more difficult. Why don't we just, why don't we, well, how does the board feel? I won't.
So I'm comfortable. I think that they are, have been very receptive to our thoughts and concerns. And I think that they always do a really nice job down there. So I'm, you know, again, staying in our lane. When I saw the original steel staircase, I was like, ooh, that's not what I would want. But partially, I also thought, you know, that's your business. If that's the look you're going for, you know, I don't want to tell you how your business should look because I wouldn't want someone telling me how my business should look. But I think you've made a great effort to, to listen to our concerns. And I, and I wouldn't want to delay, you know, I've seen you guys out there working, and you probably just want to wrap up a project. So I wouldn't want a delay, but I also, looking at what's on our schedule, you know, I wouldn't want to delay our schedule either. So whatever is, I'm comfortable.
Fine with that motion if we were, you know, to make it contingent upon, you know, the approval of the building department.
And we'll get the dimensions of that area that, that we're looking at there.
I'll, yeah, I can, so I'll present it to the building inspector and get his approval, and then he'll notify you guys to then be able to go forward with him, go forward with the application. Is that how that works?
No, I think what we're talking about is, I think.
And then you go to the building department, sorry.
And I appreciate all, like Cheryl's so into the details, and I think that is really important, so I don't want to dismiss your concern, but I want you to be comfortable.
I'm okay with just saying that if you want to submit a revised site plan for the record, that clarifies what the six foot three dimension is, and that we can make it such, I think that if you find in your building permit application that the building official would like to see any changes, that we would like to be, review those changes. So that's the way I would leave it. So if you want, I can make a motion to that effect.
All right, then, can I have a motion actually to close the public hearing first? So is there anyone who would like to speak to this from the, actually, from the public? Or any hands up on Zoom who would like to speak to this before we close the public hearing? Okay, then a motion to close the public hearing, 10 Bassett Street Site Plan Approval Modification.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, I would entertain the motion.
Okay, so I just wanted to get the actual application on the agenda. Hold on, so give me one second. When are things open?
Do you want?
I've got it now. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the 10 Bassett Street Site Plan Approval Modification subject to receipt of a detail on the site plan of the landing of the stair with dimensions to treads and railing extensions. And contingent also upon if any changes are requested by the building commissioner, that those changes be brought to the planning board at least for review, if not modification.
Second.
Sorry, it's long.
All in.
That's what it takes.
Did you get that, or do you?
Yeah, no, we'll, we'll double check.
Great. So there's a second? You seconded it?
I did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
It's looking good.
Good to see you done. You two look great. No, 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 it's not, not for any other reason, for that reason. I like to finish the project once we start.
Planters of the basement.
It's gonna be a nice, you know, asset to that place. It's gonna be, I think, a nice corner when you see it done. It's really gonna conform nicely, you know, so.
Thanks again.
Thank you very much.
Okay, and now our next item on the agenda, old business, 79 Pleasant Street, discussion and vote on site plan approval decision. And we have Marion, ready? Ready for you?
Welcome, buddy.
Good, welcome.
Sorry, I was, I didn't know you were done.
That's all right.
How would you like to proceed? I'll introduce myself.
If you can introduce yourself, yes, and.
Also find my glasses.
Sure, take your time.
So I'm Mary McHattrick. I represent the applicant for a site plan review process that we've just completed for 7 and 9 Pleasant Street and 672 Randolph Ave. And the board has approved the site plan, but you asked me to draft a decision. So I think tonight, the purpose of our meeting is to review the draft decision. And depending, if you've all read it and you have questions, that would be terrific.
You don't need to go through it all, yeah.
Because it's slow, and you have a lot more, you still have a lot more to do tonight, so, anyway, you want to do it, it's fine.
Thank you. Any questions from the board on, there were just a few things that we were tightening up and then putting it into a written format.
I read it. I appreciate, Marion, your attention to detail. I think you picked up a couple of typos or cleanup things.
I just did, yeah, today, yes.
Which, which I was gonna point out, but I didn't have any suggested edits to it, so thank you.
I don't either. I think it's fine, you know. I also think it's been a really good process, to be honest with you.
Yeah, yes.
From the beginning to the end, and I think the conclusion is a good conclusion.
I agree. I don't have any questions. You're always very detailed. So I think it's a, it's a great project.
Thank you.
Good job.
So my only request is, if the board does vote to approve the written decision, I have a hearing with the Board of Appeals on Tuesday. As you know, variance is a significant part of this project. And if, if you can sign this decision, if you can sign, do a signature page.
Do you have one?
I have the whole thing even with the two edits that I made. So if you can sign it tonight, it still has to be filed, but that can be done by, you know, by Josh. Then I will be able to show the decision to the Board of Appeals in advance of their meeting. And that's gonna help a lot because otherwise, they're gonna want to continue. They're not gonna want to, but they'll have to continue for another meeting. And they have a lot on their plate, too.
We can sign it right now.
So this is.
If we have a motion.
You could, yeah, take your vote first.
We need to take the vote, yes.
That's what I was just gonna ask. Entertain a motion to approve the site plan modification decision for 79 Pleasant Street and 672 Randolph Avenue.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a clean copy. You can still check it, but the signature page is what we need to do tonight.
It doesn't need to be blank. How you get something done, Mary?
Thank you. So Josh, if you are ready tomorrow to file with the town clerk, if you could send me a scanned copy of the. That's what I can show the Board of Appeals.
You'll get that.
Thank you very much.
We can get some things done efficiently.
It's not dated. Will you date this?
Yeah, I'll write it once you get it back to me, and I'll record your vote.
Good night, everybody.
Thank you.
The rest of your meeting, I'll be listening, but I'll probably go home and do it at home.
You had to wait over two hours for a few minutes, but.
Interesting to listen to this as always.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, is this yours or hers?
All mine.
All right, sorry, sorry.
You'll need to do some signing as well after a few minutes.
Thank you for all your work on this. That's great. Okay, so the last item on our old business on the agenda, just a couple of items here. First, discussion of the results of the February 14 vote and our next steps. And I guess I can just sort of start us off, but let the board, please, everyone discuss this. I think, I for one am glad, I'm grateful for all the residents who came out to vote, whether it was for yes or no. I think it was an amazing turnout, and I think it showed that people really care deeply about this town, about how we're, we're moving forward in thoughtful, thoughtful planning. I heard two strong messages that came out of the vote that are, that are very clear. The first is that there is significant concern on the District along Granite Avenue, the East Milton Square area and the Granite Ave districts. I think those are something that I think most of the town, even prior to the vote, even people who were in favor of the yes vote, said, we recognize that this is something that, even if we're gonna vote yes, we would want to change later. So I think there was a lot of consensus on that. The, the next thing that I just, I found to be very clear was that our town feels like it's been unfairly classified and designated for zoning for 25%. I think we have people in town who want nothing. I think people who want 25%. And we heard, we heard very strongly, you know, people on, on both sides. What I believe, and I, the person who spoke earlier, I could not agree with more that I want to see our town come together. I want to see the planning board. And I believe strongly that we can, we can come up with a plan that is a consensus building, and it demonstrates that ultimately, we have a mandate, we are listening to the residents, and that we can, we can move towards compliance, we can move towards improving affordability, sustainability, and ultimately achieve a really, really, a great plan that I think all of our, that residents hopefully can come together and, and support. I would like, I think at this point, I, I would like to suggest what we work on is a, a plan. And we were looking at the districts. We, this is, we've done tremendous amount of work. So to Eric Holkerson's, you know, his question, are we starting for point zero? I don't think so. I think we have some really good, strong districts that we have studied thoroughly, that there's no reason to go back and, and start that again, that we can, we can take off. We already have underway our economic feasibility study, working on attaining a 15% request. We have a mixed, a mixed-use mandate. We know where we want to put our mixed use. But we will have that economic feasibility study, which, again, is currently underway. We're working on our site plan approval. Tim and Josh have been working on a general draft, which we'll get to later. But I think a lot of our time, our time was not wasted, essentially. And I think if we, what I see as a consensus, is working towards a 10% at this point, going for something that I believe we can work with the state, we can work with EOHLC. Hopefully, you know, the AG will give us time to work on this. But I feel that it's a coming together of our town and our community, and 25% was, was rejected, and that plan was rejected. It was voted no. And that doesn't mean that we should not be putting something together in a plan on the planning board. And I feel this is the best way to achieve and bring our town together. And that would be my goal, that we would start with that, and we would take that and be able to present that to town meeting. Again, town meeting will have an option to choose, because I think, right now, we have no, we have no options. And we need to look at the East Milton and, and really, you know, make a commitment to listening to the residents on, on what we've heard. And I think that's, would be my suggestion on, on how we begin, and I.
Chair, Tim.
Tim, yes, please, that's.
Yeah, Meredith, I just wanted to clarify. The economic feasibility analysis is on the Article I sub-districts and dimensional parameters, which, which no longer exist. And MAPC is not gonna be able to do an analysis until they have districts and dimensional parameters to actually evaluate. So I actually don't know how much progress can be made on that economic feasibility analysis unless there's an assumption that we're just gonna stick with the Article I districts, which, which again, it doesn't sound like we are, nor can we.
I envision this, you know, and again, I want to hear from the board, but I, I see this, the path forward, including many of the districts that are already being evaluated. So, for example, the, the East and West Bridge area being sort of a foundation. You know, again, I understand completely that we, and we also need to study, and we have not heard to your, you know, what you repeatedly said, that we need a financial, a fiscal analysis done, which we, we need to have those districts. And that's why I think, I think we could move towards locating and targeting a 10% so that we could, we could, you know, we could tweak, Tim, the work that's been done so far, you know, advance this, and, and, you know, give something that they could, they will be able to focus in on specifically on, on the districts there. As well as, you know, hearing from our town departments, the questions that are outstanding, you know, on, on what that would look like, a 10% number versus 25% because the reality is that would, that would look very differently from, from a variety of perspectives.
I mean, I'll, I'll talk, I'll talk to MAPC when I get back to the office and see kind of if there's an ability to kind of back into that. The, the point of the economic feasibility analysis, the product that is produced, is, you know, an analysis that matches up with whatever zoning the town actually passes to say, you know, this zoning has a 10% requirement, you know, we think it's feasible to include a 15% requirement. So you sort of, there is a chicken and an egg issue here. You know, we can talk to MAPC and kind of, you know, give them the lay of the land and kind of see if there's an option. But again, you know, absent having a, a set, you know, set of sub-districts with, with an anticipated number of units, I, I don't know how much, you know, they, they could do an analysis, but if it doesn't match up with what town meeting eventually passes, it's not gonna be useful for the purposes of getting us to that additional affordability. But again, I can talk to MAPC and report back on that.
All right, that would be great.
You know, on this, on this specific topic, my opinion is that it doesn't make sense to jump through hoops, as an expression, to produce an economic feasibility analysis unless it's based on data, you know, or sub-districts that are real. And the proposal, I believe, said that they'd be complete by April 30th. That's, I think that's what was in the agreement.
Based off of Article I?
Right. If, if we didn't stop the process, right? If, if we didn't stop the process, right, and I think had Article I passed, that would have been fine, keep them on track for April 30th. In my opinion, I think what Mr. Holkerson said earlier today in Citizen Speak is probably the most rational way to look at it. You know, we do need the time to do this in a manner that we do it twice and not three times. We shouldn't do things that put us on a path to do this three times. And I think what Mr. Holkerson said is, is most reasonable. We cannot accomplish what would need to be done to be able to be prepared for May Town Meeting. He suggested October. I think that it's probably the most reasonable thing we should do is prepare ourselves for October. But May doesn't seem realistic. I'm, I'm sure there are plenty of people that would agree that May is not realistic.
Right. And I think we need to be honest about that. I agree, yeah.
Yeah. I, I wanted to comment on it, and at least that specific topic while you and Tim are discussing that. I just, I just don't think we should waste our time or effort or money having MAPC do something. That's really not going to have a whole lot of value.
So let's follow up after we talk about, you know, and, and how we hit pause on that, because we want that work to continue. But maybe we do hit a pause until we have something more concrete. But it's all an important part of what we would want to ultimately present to town meeting, I think.
Tim, are they underway already?
No. They're not on contract.
Okay.
No, they are not, yeah.
Okay. And my understanding is that we can write an article with lang, with, with language in it, what, you know, subject to the study being completed.
Yeah.
Yes.
Right? So now that I'm just, I'm talking about, like, even in the fall, you know, but I don't see why that wouldn't be realistic.
Yeah. I think the hope is that that study would be ongoing at the time of the article's approval to give it the kind of trust when the AG's office reviews it with their municipal...
Right. Once we establish our zoning districts, we can have them do it, right?
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is in a world where you're voting on new zoning. So, yeah.
I think the, the real issue, and, and obviously, this is, this has been the issue since the very beginning, is the number. Right? That's the issue. All these other things we can, we can, we can and we have to work on. We do have to do an economic feasibility analysis. I think we'd all agree, we need the highest percentage of affordable that we can possibly achieve, and we need to find ways to contribute to affordable, even if we're not building affordable, funding the Affordable Housing Trust and so many measures like that. But, you know, we have, do have some people that want no zoning, they want zero, and we have people that want 25. And I agree with what you said at the outset of this particular segment of our meeting. We need to find a compromise. And, you know, my opinion is, and I'm not saying anything that I haven't said for months, you know, I believe that we are not a rapid transit community. I believe that an adjacent community status is what we should have been designated as. And I would agree that we should put together a zoning plan to comply with a 10 percent. And in a town that's fractured like it is, I see the two extremes as being the extreme of zero and the extreme of 25. And we need to find a way to bridge the gap between the two extremes. There are people that say, "Oh, no, we're a rapid transit community." And there are people that say that, "No, we're not a rapid transit community." There's, there's plenty of historical basis for it. I think a couple of the, a couple of the attendees have done plenty of research on that. And obviously, there's a conversation that has to take place with, with HLC. So, but, you know, there's an awful lot of people in town that are wondering, "Well, what is the planning board going to do?" And I'm not of the mindset that we should, you know, do nothing. I'm of the mindset that we should prepare ourselves for October. And, and I believe that the best path for us to be on is to prepare zoning for a 10 percent, for a 10 percent number. And I think what we learned from, we had almost 10,000 people come out to vote, and the people that were opposed to Article I were opposed in a number that was 8 percent. And I think what we learned is that town meeting was not representative of the, the town at large. That's what we learned. When those that voted no prevailed by 8 percent over those that voted yes, that's dramatically different than town meeting that had two-thirds voting in support of it and one-third of it, one-third of town meeting voting against it. So the 250-some people in town meeting on that issue were not representative of the point of view of the, of the town at large. I feel there's a mandate that we have to follow. And that mandate is the, the number of voters that voted, you know, against Article I. We have a responsibility to listen to them and to work on, on their behalf to achieve what they voted for. Is it easy work? No, it's not. It's hard work. There's a, there's a measure of divisiveness in the town that I hope one of the, one of the speakers earlier in Citizen Speak had raised it. We all know it, we all feel it. There, there are yes people in this room, and there are no people in this room. There's no doubt about it. And I hope at the conclusion of this, that, you know, we can all accept whatever the conclusion is, and we can move forward and enjoy the beautiful town that we have. I've said for an awful long time, I feel a duty to pay very good attention to the fiscal impact that this would have. And in my opinion, I don't feel as a town that we should ride on our KG's analysis only. You know, I took a look at the role description for our town administrator, and the responsibility for budget in this town is the town administrators. I've said many times that there are budget holders, if you will, a person responsible for the budget for the significant departments of the town. And we have yet to hear how they would feel about their ability to provide services should Milton grow in terms of the number of residences and the number of, of citizens. I think responsibly, you know, we need to hear from Nick, and we need to hear from those that are responsible for the budget for those departments. I, I will not, you know, be a supporter of any zoning. I don't care if it's 25 or 10 or any number in between, based only on a consultant that's not going to own the future of Milton's financial position. That, I think, is reckless. There might be some good data in there that's useful. There's also plenty of questions in regard to that data. So, you know, back to Mr. Holkerson's point of view earlier, that it's very difficult to accomplish anything for May. He's absolutely right. He is right. And if we're going to do something correct, we're most likely on a timeline for October.
So I'll have to eat a little crow on that one, because I've always thought that we could get it done in the three to six months and have an article. I think 10 percent, I agree with the 10 percent. I think our town is just so torn apart. It was torn apart with the ADU law, then with the land swap, and now with this. And I think, to Sean's point, a 10 percent number is a, is a fantastic compromise. And I think it obviously will be easier than 25 percent. The only thing that concerns me is we would have to pursue reclassification at the same time. And I don't know if we, we meaning this board, or we meaning in conjunction with the select board, or some kind of an outside attorney. I don't know exactly what that looks like, but that is paramount to getting our 10 percent. So I'm on board with working hard, zoning for 10 percent, getting it done. I just can't get my hand around how we pursue the reclassification. That's all.
We absolutely have to work with the select board on this. And this is where, again, this is compromise. This is working together. And the question, will they be willing to, to help us in that effort, working with the state? Because I think that's, that's critical, essential to really, to getting this, to getting us into compliance.
Do you want to go?
No, go ahead.
So I agree that we've heard from the residents of the town, and I've heard that they don't want us to be classified as a rapid transit community. And our now official position of the town is the town vote. And I feel like that supersedes anything that, like, we've said and the town meeting and the select board says. So we have to honor and respect that official position. And we have to move forward, you know, with, consistent with this town-wide vote. And I don't think anybody should do anything to undermine the town-wide vote. And I think that means all of us do have to work together. I agree with that. And I think we kind of have to, you know, stop, you know, you know, disparaging comments and fear-mongering comments and, you know, kind of, you know, don't fall into the trap of listening to social media and what's going on there. It kind of is us, you know, us five, working with the selectmen and listening to the residents as they come forward around our tables, our mutual tables. And because I think there's a lot more respect that happens around our tables than happens on social media. I think we need to have an agreement amongst ourselves that we support reclassification efforts and that we support a, a plan that, you know, puts us into the adjacent community category. And I just want us to all to kind of work together and come to that, because I really think that when we all work together, I think really, in particular, this board, I really think we come up with great things. And, you know, and I, and I want to get there. As I've said before, and I said at town meeting, we all have unique, you know, experiences. And even tonight, like Cheryl's, you know, details, really impressive. So I, I think we can, I think we can get there. And I think, you know, we as a board respect each other immensely, and I appreciate that. And so I think we should be committed to seeking reclassification. I think we owe it to the residents of the town, and I think we do that as we, as we create zoning. And I think we are already there. We have many properties in town that we already agree on. And I don't think it will be that difficult to get there. But I do want to get it right, and I think it should take some time. And just seeing that picture that Pete Jackson proposed, that is a really pretty building, you know, down in, at the extra space storage. And I think there are certain parts in town that are just ripe for development. So, you know, I just, I just think we should listen to the residents of the town and move forward and, and work together.
So I will make a couple of comments. I think the only thing that we know with certainty is that there were more no votes for Article I than there were yes votes. We don't know why people voted no. We shouldn't assume we know why people voted no. And we shouldn't assume why we know why people voted yes. There were 10,000-plus voters, as Sean mentioned, and over 4,000 of them, 4,000 of them voted yes. We have an obligation to listen to every one of those voters and those who didn't vote as much as we do to the ones who voted no and those, again, who, who didn't vote. I think the first thing we have to do is a public engagement process. We need to understand what people are thinking. We shouldn't assume what people are thinking. We shouldn't assume, based on our own observations over time or the individual conversations that we've had, that we know what everyone wants to do. We shouldn't assume that everyone wants to seek reclassification, because we don't know what the consequences of that could be. We have a joint meeting on Monday. I would in no way want to make any declaration about what we're committing ourselves to do until we have that joint meeting. You want to work in collaboration with the select board? We haven't had the meeting yet. So what are we going to do? Go in with a declaration that this is what we want, and that is going to be considered working together in the spirit of togetherness? So I think we need to step back a little bit and think about what we mean by the spirit of togetherness and bridging some divides that I think were mostly through social media, honestly. I think a lot of people worked really hard to try and express their views, and I think we need to consider all of those views. So I think the first thing we should think about is what, what are we trying to accomplish? Or if rapid transit is the thing that all of you think we should be pursuing, start engaging in what the plan would be. What's the process? What do you, what does the board need to do in order to seek that? And then, if you get success with that, or if you don't, so you have, you start at the top. Here's the plan. You seek reclassification. It goes this way if it's a no, it goes this way if it's a yes. What's the plan? What's the timeframe? What criteria are you going to use? Whether it's 10 percent or 25 percent? How are you going to make decisions? So that's the first thing in my mind. And that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. And I think it will have to be a conversation, but I think the select board is going to say, "What is the planning board intending to do?" And I think that's where we need to come in and say, "We are listening to the residents, and we've all been lis," I listen, I, everyone who's come to our public meetings, who's spoken up, I, we, we, we have a public opportunity for Citizen Speak to come before us, and we have heard, you know, again and again, different, you know, different reasons for no. You're right. I think there are a variety of reasons for no. There's a variety of reasons for yes. And, but, you know, one thing I have to say, I heard a lot of yes people saying, "I don't believe we're rapid transit, but I'm voting yes, because I feel like I want to be compliant." So I would say that, you know, of the people I speak to, 80% of the people, whether they vote yes or no, thought that was the biggest issue. The other hu, tremendous issue, which I don't think we need to do a study, because if you look at precincts six, seven, eight, it's clear that those districts do not, that those districts, those 1,100 units were not acceptable. And that was a huge, that was a strong voice that I, I plan to listen to. I plan to address that.
So I would say that...
And we write the zoning. The planning board will be doing this. So we want to work, and we want to come to a compromise, we want to work together. But, but I agree. Well, our, our meeting on Monday, but we have to have a direction that we're going.
But we also, again, I'm going to come back to, we shouldn't assume what we read from the voters, that the conversations that you had as an individual. And public engagement purely at Citizen Speak, I don't think is a strong enough ma, method to get public engagement. We had public forums before, we had a survey, and we should really have more outreach. We should have, I think, you know, let's say you have a coffee hour, and you have it several times, and it's a po, and it's something that people can just pop into and ask questions. It's where, it's the way planning is done in some places, because you can't, not everybody can come sit four hours at a, at a meeting. They may have children at home, or they had to put the kids to bed at the time it was their opportunity to speak. And some of them may not feel like they understand the zoning well enough. And in an informal setting, they might feel like they can understand it better. So I think that community engagement plan, if we're talking about the potential of the fall, plan a process that will make people feel as if all voices are going to be heard, and it doesn't require just coming and sitting in front of a microphone. That's intimidating to some people, too. And so that's the first piece to me. And I absolutely think that we shouldn't start by saying, "We know that East Milton Square, and we know that classification is unfair." If that's what we're saying, then I don't, I don't know what you're basing that on. You don't, the data, you're, you're reading it out of a vote, but you're not actually willing to collect the data to make sure that what you've read from the vote is accurate. So if you want to be working in the spirit of compromise, I think you've got to rethink that as well.
I think a coffee hour process, and I'm being serious. We have 10,000 people that voted. How many coffee hours do you think we're going to have to be able to get the community at large to provide feedback?
It's, it's... It's an opportunity for somebody who may want it.
It might be fine. It, it might be fine to have it, but it's... It might be fine to have it, but it's not going to be as representative as what we just went through. There are, as I look at it, the people that voted no were opposed to it. The people that voted yes is comprised of a number of different groups of people. There were some people that are completely on board with 25% and all of what they would view as the benefits of it. There were people that voted yes because they felt threatened. They felt threatened, let me finish if you don't mind, they felt threatened by the rhetoric, you know, of the state. And they felt threatened for this notion of a loss of funding, right? They didn't necessarily feel, they didn't feel inspired to vote, that group of people, and you know there's plenty of them. We've heard from them. Those people didn't necessarily vote yes because they were completely on board with 25%, you know, for, of zoning for the town and, you know, everything else that they would perceive to be benefits. It was a defense mechanism against what they were afraid of. And there's an awful lot of people. So if you take the number of people that voted no, and then you also consider the number of people that voted yes because they felt threatened, I think you've got a pretty significant number of people. Can I tell you what percentage of the people that voted yes voted yes out of fear? I can't. But we hear it. We know it's out there. You know that every person that voted yes wasn't a person that said, I'm totally on board with this thing. I think it's a great idea.
I think people voted yes for different reasons. I think people voted no for different reasons.
Do you disagree with my, do you disagree with my perception of the yes voters?
I don't, I'm not making a perception about any. All I know is that.
Have you not heard that yes voters voted out of fear?
So Sean, how many individuals?
Can you answer my question?
Sean, where are you getting your information? Is it from social media?
No, I'm not.
How many conversations have you had then?
Cheryl, I'm not on social media.
How many individual conversations with the yes voters did you have then?
Most yes voters don't approach me.
So then how do you know? That's my point is I'm not assuming I know how anybody voted or why.
You know this conversation has gone on throughout the community. You, you don't want to agree that people on the yes side voted yes out of fear.
I don't think they voted yes out of fear.
Okay, okay. I'm not going to even bother, you know, the conversation, it's not worth it. Let's, let's, let's do things that are more beneficial in terms of time.
And I think my point is, let's have something to show them. I absolutely would love to do a public and have some invite and have a public forum. But I think we should have something to show them because we did a lot of work. You know how we analyzed a lot of these districts. We understood where there is currently multifamily housing, what the setbacks are, what the heights are in these buildings. So we're, to throw it all out, I, I think we should have something that we can show them and present that and then ask for the public's, we would love their opinions. I'm not at all, you know, unwilling to do that. And I think it's, I would absolutely think we will have to have a public forum. Actually, with any new zoning that we do, we are required to have a public, we are a public hearing on that. So there will be a public process and I would love to open that. But I really do feel like we should have something to show in what these heights, what the setback, you know, all the information, everything that we've studied. But we do that for, at a 10% number where we have something that our town can come together on.
To answer what Mr. Holkinson asked earlier, is the, are we starting from scratch or are we working with what we created? My opinion is, we have an awful lot of, we have an awful lot of the zoning that's been created that we should work with and we should keep. And if you consider everything from, from, let's say, Blue Hill Ave and all the districts that were created, you know, running down through the Elliott Street corridor and over to Milton Village, there's a lot of good work there. There's a lot of good zoning. And, and I think there's design guidelines that have been drafted and prepared and it's all good. We should not, we should not throw any of that out. We should see how we can work with it. That's my opinion.
I agree. That becomes our foundation. But I think we have to start with, broken record, we have to start with the maps. Look at the maps and see where we want this stuff and then apply our criteria to that. I see no reason why we can't use what Cheryl created because it's fantastic and it works.
A lot of the work, yeah, with the consultants, with Tim, you know, with the work that we've done, I think it's a great foundation to start with. And that we present it, we have something that we can present at town meeting, whether it's, you know, October, November, you know, depending on what that schedule would be. But I think we work towards having something that is acceptable to the residents of the town.
And we all understand that there is a statute. We all understand that we want to be part of the solution. We understand that things need to change and we want to be part of that change. And, but sometimes, you know, change is a little bit better when it's a little bit slow and it's incremental. And, you know, again, I'm, I'm in a very fortunate position where I don't need a coffee hour. My 12 hours of work every day is a coffee hour. And every day, somebody different walks through my door and has a difference of an opinion. And I spend the time and listen to them and they're not all complimentary comments. And so I do, I can honestly say that there are people in town who voted because they were afraid. And there are honestly people in town who want nothing. And there are people who are full on board, 25%. And, and I've listened to them all. I've listened to the criticism. I read the criticism online. My kids read the criticism online. And it's not always fun to read it, but that's how you get information. And I, I think that public engagement is always a huge thing and I do think we need to do it. But I don't think we have to throw everything out that we've done because I think we've done good work. And I, and I don't, and I think we should just always keep moving forward. Every day we wake up and we move forward. And that's what I hope that we do. I want to move forward. I, I think we should pursue reclassification. And I think we should, you know, create very good zoning.
Anything else? Okay. So we do have a meeting on Monday. I think this has been a great conversation. I feel like we, I don't think we need to take a vote right now, but I think we, we have a direction that we can move, move ourselves forward and, and, you know, sort of really, you know, try to form consensus and work together. I think there's someone from the, if anyone from the public or online would like to speak, I would welcome. If anybody would like to say anything, welcome.
Thanks.
Your name and address for the record. Yeah.
Brian O'Halloran, Seven Morton Terrace. The residents of Milton have spoken and there is a clear mandate for a dramatic reduction in the scope and the impact of this legislation on Milton. I think we are all encouraged to hear that the planning board and the select board are getting together next week. For the first time, and this is a huge step forward, we have a unique opportunity to address the erroneous classification as rapid transit. We are by all objective measures not rapid transit and look forward to both the planning board and the select board revisiting this issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a hand on Zoom if you wanted to alternate.
Sure, yes.
We have Jennifer Raymond.
Okay.
Hi, thank you. My name is Jennifer Raymond. I live on 18 Hanaton Avenue, precinct nine. And I just wanted to, you know, comment on the conversation that was just happening about what were voters' motivations. You know, as someone who, I, I was in support of the, of the proposal. So, you know, I'll put that out there upfront, but I spent a lot of time walking around and talking to people in my precinct, having conversations with both yes and no voters. And what I heard on both sides, I guess I would disagree with Mr. Faghi's characterization of the voters here. What I heard on both sides was a real variety of reasons, just like the previous speaker who is questioning the rapid transit classification. I heard no voters who didn't support the proposal because they thought we should fight that. I heard no voters who said they didn't like that the state was interfering in local zoning. I heard no voters who said they were in favor of changing zoning, but they wanted, they wanted multifamily housing to be more spread out across town. So I think there are a lot of motivations on that side. And I heard the same thing on yes, on the yes side. I heard yes people who said, I wish it had more, you know, I wish it had more. I wish it maybe had more affordable housing. I wish it, you know, I wish it was different. This was a compromise. Or, I don't know if I feel great about the plan. I don't know if this is the best plan, but I think we should have a plan. And the lack of a plan keeps getting us into trouble. And we need to have, you know, we need to have a plan. So I think there are a lot of reasons why people form strong opinions about this. And I think there was, there was, you know, fear on both sides. There, I think there was fear on both sides. So I think it's unfair to, you know, mischaracterize one side or the other side. You know, there were a lot of people in this town and, you know, if we, we trust that people are acting in good faith. You know, both sides are speculating about what they think the plan should be. And both sides are speculating about what they think the consequences may or may not be. And so I would just, you know, I would really ask the planning board to, you know, and my, and my feeling, and this is, you know, the same thing I said to voters of both sides when I was walking around, is that, you know, we need to be as honest as possible and listening to each other and we're going to disagree, but we also have to figure out how to work together. Disagree and work together and, and not, not kind of, you know, stereotype each other or put each other into boxes that, that create, you know, that contributes to this divisiveness because it's not helpful. So thank you so much. And, you know, I really hope that the planning board is going to put together a plan. I was, I was disappointed to hear, you know, people saying after the vote, we should resist, you know, we should, you know, fight the classification because one of the arguments that, you know, was happening at the time during the vote was, we just need more time, we just need more time to come up with a better plan. So I hope that we are going to come up with a better plan for Milton. And I really believe that we do need a plan. And so I hope, you know, I look forward to hearing the planning board and, and hearing, being part of those conversations. And thank you for all the work that you're doing.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you.
I think, I think there's plenty of people in the room also.
Do you want to speak? Yes, please.
Just for a moment, it's like a, well, yes, I promise. Mark Cristo, 17 Waldorf Road. Feel like I know all of you well enough to be able to sit at the table and just speak briefly. And I came here today just to listen. That's all I really want to do. But I do want to leave before, you know, with the thought that when I came to town meeting, and that was tough for me to get up in front of everybody and speak, I came having prepared for almost a year now. The first time I came in front of anybody here was last February, one of those Zoom calls that Tim had, the first forum, I think, or at least the first one that I recollect. And I came with lots of information. And some of the information, I know some people don't accept. But I always try to weigh my thoughts with factual evidence. And I think there's a lot on the table there that we could really come up with a very clear understanding why we are a community that sits adjacent to rapid transit. And I think that that goes a long way in supporting what it is that we're looking to do. We're trying to resolve an issue that's pitting one neighborhood against the other. We've got numbers that are excessive. And if you look at the rule of law, which should be applied fairly to all, and that includes all communities, we want to make sure that we feel that we are not zoning or being asked to do something in excess of other communities. And I think you should think of that when we sit down and we come up with this plan. I don't want to say that, I, I think you've all done a tremendous job. I think we fumbled a little bit as a community in terms of presenting the evidence. And I think that we need to do our best job this time around. You know, it is a second chance in a sense. And we have a clear understanding that there are people on, on both sides that have, in their mind, reasons for, for wanting to vote yes, wanting to vote no. But I do feel that everybody feels that this has strained the town, the numbers strained the town, and there's legitimate reason to really seek the reclassification. I think we need to do it. We have succeeded in bringing this topic to a larger audience than just us here at this table. I kind of would never have imagined that that would be the case, but it is the case. And I think we need to leverage this at this point to the benefit of all. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Christine Hoffman, has her hand raised?
Okay, welcome. Christina.
Hi, thank you very much. This is Christine Hoffman. I live at Maple Street and full disclosure as the treasurer of the yes campaign. And I voted yes for the one. And I just want to reiterate some of what Jennifer said before was that I don't, I don't think any of you in this room can make assumptions on a yes or a no voter and why they voted yes or no. I think, I'm sure you've had many personal conversations with people who come to your workplace or who are comfortable talking to you or whatever about why they particularly voted their specific reason. But there are way many more people that have not spoken to you directly or specifically about why they voted for, you know, either for or against this article. This article and this MBTA communities law is extremely complicated. It's very complicated. And in order to be able to educate the wide voter population, we did not have enough time to do that, nor, I don't know that we could ever do that fully. It's extremely complicated. And what was put forward was used, you know, by the regulations and what was put into that article as best as it could. So I agree, maybe we fight classification. If you as a group think that that's something that we should go for, go ahead. But you need to be prepared for a plan for whether we get that classification changed or whether we don't get that classification changed because that could happen in either direction. And we can't predict what that answer is going to be. So I just think that's something that we all need to think about now because it could be a long time before we understand that. And in the meantime, we are noncompliant with the law and are feeling, as we already know, some of the repercussions of what that means. I'm thrilled that the, that the state is saying that they're willing to work with us. But I don't know that that means that they're going to take away any of the penalties that they had, had said were going to come down if we didn't, you know, didn't agree with compliance. So I guess I just wanted to add, add to that. I think there was fear on both sides and why people voted yes or no, either because they weren't fully understanding or because there was fear of traffic or what might happen in their neighborhood, whether that was going to really happen or not. So, you know, I appreciate that you're all going to think about this and collaborate with the select board and the town planner who did most of the work in putting together this article and the zoning. And hopefully we can come forward and come together as a town with something that many more of us can all agree on. So, thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
There's plenty of more hands, but I.
Anyone?
Then it's Megan Walsh on Zoom.
Okay, on Zoom? Welcome, Megan.
Hello. Good evening.
Good evening.
Megan Walsh, I'm, I live at 107 Church Street, precinct seven. You know, just to reiterate, everyone, everyone has had excellent points from all sides. One thing that has been suggested numerous times is to reopen the survey, have that reopen for one week. That allows for everyone who's not comfortable attending meetings or who, who doesn't have the means to actually go to these meetings to have equal opportunity. I think we should do it for one week. You can do it online. If you don't have the possibility to do it online, you can do it in person, request that somebody brings it to you. I mean, what? I mean, whatever means, coffee hour, no way. I mean, we have gone, the yes side had their talking points, the no side had their talking points. We've been door knocking. We had a vote. I mean, how much more do we have to bug our neighbors? I think people have spoken. That clearly is, we need one means and a, a means that many people can access in a very quick turnaround time. That's not a coffee hour. And everyone here, I think, has excellent points. And first, yeah, why not? Try reclassify. But in the meantime, we work towards a better plan incorporating what people said in the survey. But I think clearly what people are saying here proves that a coffee hour is not going to get us any further across the finish line than we are today. So, thank you, everyone, for all of your work, and I appreciate everybody's talking points and, you know, let's just move on. Let's move forward. Let's do this. We can. We have 10, 50% of our town tell us what they want. And yes, we can argue, oh, well, the yes side, some people wanted this, no side, some people have spoken. We need to just move forward. That's all. Thanks. Have a great night, everyone.
Thank you.
Just, just to speak to the survey, there, there are four more hands. But just quickly, like statistically, I don't, I don't think with the current slate of questions, reopening the survey as it was written would give this board particularly useful new information.
That's what I was.
But, but we're welcome to create a new survey if that's, particularly if you have new districts that you want to sort of get a pulse on. But I, I would recommend against the survey as written being just simply reopened.
My question was.
I think a new survey would make sense, and we would need to think about what the questions should be. And it could tease out some of the things that people assume, they've stated that they assume voters are saying. Because the voters can actually tell us through the survey.
And there was a way to monitor it so you could only take it once would be great. I don't know how you do that, but.
That's a good point, too.
We, we collect email addresses when people submit. So if someone is deliberately, like, lying, they can.
You see three email addresses?
Yeah, they can, they can.
The way to monitor is what you say.
They can lie, like, we can't, like, restrict an IP address from submitting multiple. I will say, almost everyone who submitted submitted their email address, or they said, yes, I would like an email, and just didn't actually give me their email address. But that was a pretty good way of tracking. There, there wasn't a sort of swath of non emailed responses that were all identical. So I think in sort of an InfoSec way, there's not a lot we can do, and nor would it bring a lot of value or sort of show that we respect and trust the residents of this town to respond.
How many people participated in the survey?
499, tragically less than.
Yeah, that is such a small number.
Well, I mean, so survey statistics, it's, it's highly representative. It, it meets the sort of thresholds for being that 95% confidence.
But if people want to have a meaningful dialogue with their fellow residents, whether they agreed with them or not, then they may want to be, may, may be willing to do a survey, a short survey. I think it doesn't have to be a long survey. But give them the opportunity to share their thoughts. I mean, it's another way, other than sitting at the microphone. And I think we should give residents the opportunity. I, I do think it should be a redesign survey.
Happily.
And I love that idea, but I, I think also time is of the essence. I don't think we can slow down the process. I would like to see it done simultaneously with us, you know, at our next meeting, starting to, you know, to, to look at our, the foundation of, of what we would try to put forth. But while we do this, I'm, I'm, I think both, but I, I don't want to slow down the work that we're doing to say, you know, we're putting this all on hold. Because I think that sounds, sends a bad signal to the state. It makes us look indecisive. And I think it, I, I think our residents really would like to see us work with the state to come into compliance as soon as possible. So I think we could do both.
So we have three more hands. Doug Hine is next.
Great.
Good evening, everybody. Doug Hine, I'm over on Elliott Street. I was an enthusiastic yes voter, not because I was enthusiastic about the MBTA Communities Law or the EO HLC Guidelines. I most certainly was not. But I was an enthusiastic yes voter, because I kind of didn't want to be in the position that we are now. Having said that, we are all in the same foxhole together. So I would urge you, especially after hearing what was said today, that there's really only one course of action that we have before us as a town. We need to sue the Commonwealth. We need to do it quickly. I say that because four fifths of, of you folks feel that there's a mandate from the voters to pursue a 10% increase in the zoning as opposed to 25%. Now, the governor, the attorney general, lieutenant governor, the secretary of the HLC have said unambiguously that the guidelines call for 25% increase, not 10%. So something's got to give. And, and as much as I think we'd all like to think that, you know, everybody could get together and figure this out over a meeting, it's not going to happen. There's too much political capital involved. There's too many other towns that are looking to see what happens here. And, and frankly, in, in a, in a battle of wills or battle of resources, we're at a disadvantage. So I think we need to, to move quickly and move first, try and clear up what our categorization is going to be. And there are some, some good compelling arguments to make as to why we should not be designated a rapid transit community. And, and I think the only way that we're going to have any clarity is if this gets, gets resolved in front of a judge. I, I also want to suggest that doing so quickly is important because while the majority of the capital grants have been made for this year, come the fall, it's going to be a new round of funding. So all those discretionary grants that we, you know, we're threatened with losing are going to be on the chopping block. And as, you know, you probably know, the amount of money that we're getting from the state is, is going down quite a bit. There's a projected shortfall of anywhere between $500,000 and $600,000 on our budget. And, and so it's really important that we get an idea of where we're going to go with this thing sooner rather than later. So if it is 10%, I think there certainly is, you know, groundwork that's been done, as you said, and we can probably get something together that town meeting would, would look very seriously at. If we have to go back to 25% because of a judicial order or some other reason, then that's going to take some work. And it's got to be a, a plan that, while compliant at that level, also is one that allows us to, to submit it because, you know, we've got to be careful that, that two-year moratorium, we can't submit another bylaw or another article that, that is substantially the same in essence or character as one that's already been rejected. So we may need to get our, our state representatives and state senator involved to maybe even do something about carving out an exception to, to, to the law, the state level, for us to do that. Anyway, started to ramble, it's late. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Great comments, Doug. Thank you.
John Cohane.
John Cohane, please, welcome. John, go ahead, if you're with us.
I can only ask him to unmute, which I've done.
Oh, okay.
Mechanically, I can't just unmute.
No, I, I couldn't tell if you could see if he was unmuted or not.
Luke M. also has his hand raised. Maybe we could bring him in.
Okay, we can do Luke and then come back to John.
Hello, my name is Luke McKinnon. I live at 170 Center Street. I want to start by thanking you for your expertise and service on this board. I wanted to say I was disheartened by some board members seeing the vote as a mandate to pursue reclassification. And that I believe we are a rapid transit community in need of more affordable housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, John, can we get John back?
He's, he's been here the whole time. I'm, I'm sorry, John.
Maybe he's. Anyone else?
No more hands are raised.
Okay. All right, I'm sorry, John, we couldn't get you. No more hands are raised. So I think, in the meantime, if John wants to try to come back, but I think we've, we've touched on the economic feasibility analysis that we're undergoing, and I think we're all in agreement. We've not signed the contract yet with MAPC, that we can check in with them and, and, you know, take a pause on this until we actually have something worthwhile that, you know, that they can really look at.
Can I ask a question about, about that? So, you know, I always thought that the MBTA zoning was we could not impose a more strict requirement on multifamily housing than, you know, we would on regular as of right. And so usually affordable housing is created when a developer gets more than what they can get by right. But, you know, MBTA zoning is by right. So, you know, I, are we allowed? I know the statute a lot, the guidelines allow up to 10%. But if, say if a developer didn't want to do any affordable housing, could he seek relief or she seek relief from the courts to bypass that requirement?
Tim, are you on?
Maybe that's a question. Maybe that's a question for town council. But I was, you know, I didn't want to waste our funds.
I, I don't, I don't believe that's the case, but Tim can.
Yeah, I agree with Josh. I mean, obviously, we're not lawyers. And, and obviously, you can seek relief from the courts for whatever you want, whether the court's granted or not. But I, I think the, the sort of, the, the, the legal underpinnings of, you know, inclusionary zoning are kind of, you know, such that, like, yes, traditionally, there is a, you know, there, there, it's sort of a, you know, we give you more, you give us more, kind of negotiated sort of thing. You know, whether it's by right or site plan approval or special permit, I think, you know, the, the understanding is, you know, we are upzoning. And that's the sort of, you know, at the point of that sort of, you know, negotiation, it's sort of a pre-negotiation with developers, is like, we are now giving more property rights in this area in exchange for this. But that is the reason why the guidelines limit that to 10% and require an economic feasibility analysis so that, you know, the, the upzoning actually is effective and feasible. And, and the inclusionary zoning doesn't, you know, act as sort of a de facto kind of tax on development that no one can possibly pay. But I mean, you know, as for sort of, you know, whether, you know, relief can be sought through the courts, you know, you can bring anything to the courts. And, and it kind of hinges on, you know, how seriously are they going to take the guidelines?
But inclusionary zoning typically has, has a pretty strong history of case law that, that protects it.
And pre-negotiation, I understand that concept. But I just wanted to throw that out there.
Good, that's good.
John Cohane's raised his hand again. I just want to give him another chance.
John, can you hear us? If you can unmute, we would like to try one more time.
He'll look like he was unmuted, and then he muted. So maybe he tries whatever he did in reverse.
Can he call my phone?
Don't know.
Excuse me. Bless you.
Thank you.
My computer died.
Technology that we're. All right, well, there'll be other opportunities.
Okay.
I mean, send, well, 26 now.
Yep. And then just an update, Tim, on, because no matter what we end up putting together site plan, you know, we were looking at what was in Article One and reapplying that and pulling that into whatever work that we would put forth. But also doing something that could be, you know, something, a new accepted article that would address our, what do we call our, our current site plan approval process? Deficient?
I'd say deficient.
Deficient site plan approval. We, we want to improve anyway, so that's something that we can be working on again simultaneously.
Since our last meeting, and Tim can expand on this, I, I don't believe we've received from any of the board members exemplary site plans that you would like us to sort of set a framework around. So still sort of waiting on you all.
Okay, so you're waiting for us to add, okay.
As, as we said last.
So I thought we were also waiting for the NADIC one. I thought someone was working on the NADIC and we were going to.
Karis is working with NADIC. Tim?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'll follow up with, with, with town council again on that. I, I think, you know, there, there may be, I, I wouldn't look at that one necessarily as like the Uber model. I think it's just one more example. You know, we do have some examples that we've been kicking around. I had shared, you know, Lexington, Brookline, Newton, et cetera. You know, I have a, I, I put together kind of a skeleton of, you know, what language it would look like, but, you know, independent, you know, some of the aspects, you know, that you would want to see, and, you know, it is, it is, you know, simply that. So I can flesh that out a little bit more if I get some more feedback from the board, or I can give you kind of what I've got, and, you know, you can take a look at it and, and work that way. You know, either or.
I think I recommended that everyone watch the video, that, the webinar.
Yeah, what was that again? I meant, I couldn't find it on my hands.
It's on Mass Housing Partnerships website. And it was part of their MBTA Communities training. And I think it was late in the series. There's a series, I think nine of them, and it was late in that series. And Judy Barrett and an attorney conducted it, and it was really helpful. It's, we have in our special permit requirements now. So I incorporated a lot of things into Article One that I learned from that, okay? But one of the things is that, in particular, is that our site plan, we kind of ask, like we did on 440 Granite Ave, for certain things to be provided to us as a peer review, but there's nothing in our zoning that says they have to do it. So that's something that can be cleaned up. And I put it in Article One where we could actually have peer review as a requirement on certain kinds of complicate, more complicated projects, and that the peer review has to be paid for, for, by the developer. So that's, it's clearly in there. And then, one of the things that I've mentioned that I discovered over my time on the board is what we want to see in an application, whether it be the kind of information in the drawings and the kind of drawings that they supply. And so those were put into Article One. And then the process itself, those were some things I learned, again, from that webinar. So I do think, if you have a chance, it's about an hour long probably, and I can resend the link. You probably have.
Yeah, I can, I can send it.
You can find it. And then take a look at that and take a look at what's in Article One. And then, you know, I know that some communities have two tiers.
Yeah.
Like, they will have a staff level review of certain things. So we could consider that. We have something now where it's required for almost anything on a commercial building. And some things, it, it doesn't seem necessary, but, so maybe we can look at what triggers site plan approval on, on the commercial side. It's triggered for any multifamily, like in our current zoning, right? And it's triggered for the Dover Amendment projects, right? So I think it would be great to get a little more clarification if anybody else has done any work on Dover Amendment site plan requirements, because we know the law is very restrictive on those. So those are my suggestions for starting.
Yeah, sure. Incidentally, and I, I looked at the Lexington example, they actually have a kind of parallel, I would call it less intensive, site plan review specifically for Dover Amendment uses.
Okay.
And it's not, and it's not, you know, every Dover Amendment use has site plan approval. It just happens to be that a lot of those tend to be commercial in the sense of being, you know, a farm stand, you know, selling, you know, produce or, you know, a daycare business, and, and that's under our current site plan approval. But they do kind of lay out very specifically, like, these are the things that you can consider, and this is the only thing that you can consider. It's, it's pretty interesting. I'll include that in the framework for you to take a look at. And then, you know, just to, to kind of, you know, clarify a little bit on kind of, you know, what, what a lot of towns will call sort of minor site plan review. What they'll tend to do is kind of name a, you know, a kind of staff review committee includes, you know, the planning director, the town engineer, the TBW director, fire, you know, police. And, and those are the folks that are sort of responsible. So it's not just, you know, the building inspector or the planning director kind of giving the thumbs up or thumbs down. It's kind of all of the folks that, you know, you would see comment from, you know, in, in a special permit or, or other kind of public hearing process. So we, we'll also include. So we, we'll also include that in a framework. And, you know, you can give it the thumbs up or thumbs down.
And then one other thing I think would be helpful. I know on social media, there was a lot of questioning about, you know, who and why approved the farm stand on Robbins. And so, you know, I don't know that people understand what Dover Amendment uses are or what protections there are under farm. I think it would be helpful to have those somewhere on the website. So when people hear about or come to a planning board meeting, that there's something they can refer to that explains what our role is in reviewing those and how they do have state protections.
And how we're limited.
And, yeah, and how we are limited, yep.
And do you think the goal is to have a site plan approval article in May? Is that too ambitious?
I think it's possible. I think that would be one of the more realistic things that we could have a goal to achieve. Tim, I don't know, what do you, what are your thoughts on that? Having an article, a site plan approval article, I would love to see that.
I mean, to the extent that a lot of, I mean, this is obviously something that precedes, you know, MBTA communities. The board's been talking about this a lot. But I think, you know, in the sense that this was meant to be sort of a corollary to MBTA communities to kind of improve whatever that article was going to be, you know, considering that, you know, we would have a lot more multifamily projects to, you know, to review. I kind of, you know, it's up to you all. I kind of think that figuring out what the 3A article is going to be is priority one. And site plan approval can be along for the ride. But to the extent that it's taking time, resources, and attention away from the MBTA communities article, I think it should not be the priority. But again, it's really up to you all.
Because we said, going through the 440 Granite Ave process, that we wanted a more robust site plan approval process. So I would think that there are other developments that could be coming our way. Are we going to miss out? You know, is it a lost opportunity if we don't have it ready by May and something pops up?
We're going to focus on MBTA.
Yeah, and I understand that, too. And what Tim said makes sense as well, focus on the MBTA. But, you know, to have something, it doesn't mean that it's the forever. You know, we could always, your interest in protecting against, you know, a project that may come before us and maybe having something that's.
And then I would suggest, take what I put into Article 1, put that in. And then we can always revise it to do a two-tiered system or a Dover Amendment, you know, kind of revision.
That might be.
But they would offer a lot more protections than we have now.
It would be much improved rather than waiting, you know?
So I know Tim is on vacation this week, so I just am grateful. I just want to say thank you for even, you know, joining us this evening. But if you could send a skeleton, what, the framework that you have in place, and we can take a look at that and see what other towns are doing and that we would want to add to.
Yeah, I'll be able to do that first thing Monday morning. There is a little bit of cleanup that I need to do. But we'll get that out first thing next week.
Okay.
John Cohane sent a text. He wasn't able to unmute. Would you want to read his text? Is that a, is that?
There's also one more hand raised.
Yeah, we have Michael Maholchek with his hand raised. I don't know. Sure.
Okay. Do you want me to, I can read John's and then we can have Michael speak, so, or either one.
Can you read that? Yeah.
Let me see. There was two, okay. I just.
The most recent one.
Okay. "I could not unmute, sorry, but I wanted to say that following a democratic process, and it is up to those who voted no, myself included, to try to unify the town, but trust our boards to move forward with a plan." Great. Thank you, John. And now, Michael, Mike, welcome. Thank you, John.
I just unmuted myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can now. Thank you.
Oh, thanks. I'm one of the very few people in Precinct 7 that voted yes. And I appreciate what everybody's saying about trying to work together and get us through this. The only, I wanted to ask if you guys are aware of what the legislature is currently doing about the rapid transit classification? Because I saw that Rep. Driscoll submitted a bill that would answer all Sean Fahy's objections about it. It would exclude the trolley line from being considered part of a rapid transit community. And I have not really experienced looking at what the legislature is doing on their website. But the bill is not hilled. So it's, the status is they had a public hearing on it and then a reporting has been extended to April. But if that passed, that would be like, you wouldn't have to go to court, I would guess, if the law changed. Has anyone been in touch with the, with Rep. Driscoll or altered testimony about what's going on with the legislature?
I knew there was a bill put forth, but, but thank you for that update and information. And I think that's something that we definitely want to follow.
I mean, the legislature has a long process for bills. So I don't imagine, especially if you were working towards a May timeline, it would be relevant to that. But it seems like if you worked to October, there's a chance. But bills get filed all the time. That do not.
Yeah. 54% of people voted, so.
Yeah, we know this one's in committee. I don't know kind of what the nature of the public hearing was. I'll check in with Nick and see if we can get a line in at Rep. Driscoll's office to kind of see how that went. But in terms of.
Thanks.
In terms of timeline, you know, I don't have any special insight except by experience following the legislature. This is going to be sort of an end of session type of thing. You know, especially as it's a very sort of niche type of issue. But we'll follow up with Rep. Driscoll's office and kind of see how that went and take the temperature on that one.
Okay, well, thank you, everybody, for your service on the planning board, and good night.
Thank you.
Kathleen also has her hand raised.
Kathleen.
O'Donnell.
Okay, great. Welcome, Kathleen. And I think after that, we can wrap up.
Yeah, I just wanted to very shortly say that there is a House Bill Number 3551 that deals with site plan review. I was on a panel on Friday at the Real Estate Bar Association, and somebody mentioned it. I haven't read it, but you should be taking a look at that in terms of working on your next article for site plan review. That's House 3551 is the bill. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew about it.
Great, appreciate that. That's good.
Thanks, Kathleen.
Thank you, Kathleen.
That's it for hands. That's it for hands raised.
That's it for hands. Okay, good.
Close it down quick.
All right, well, thank you all. Yes, good evening, and thank you, everyone who spoke tonight. So with that emotion, we already, I believe, was that a motion? Is there a second, I don't know who was first.
The second event.
Okay, first, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you.